Regular City Council Meeting of January 26, 2023 to order. Just one moment, please. At this time, I want to introduce Zoe Gray. She is a freshman at Palm Springs High School, the class of 2026, a member of the Palm Springs High Spirit of the Sands Band and Visual Corps, and a member of Girl Scouts of San Gorgonio Troop 2517. And she will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance if we can all stand.
Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Zoe. So for those who were not present at the last meeting, we are asking local students to come in, lead us in the pledge. So, City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember DeHart, I'm sorry. Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to start quickly with a statement. On the eve of Lunar New Year, Monterey Park experienced the loss of 10 people and the wounding of an additional 10 during a mass shooting. A few days later, another shooting occurred in Half Moon Bay, where seven people were killed and one was injured. We know that these tragedies can happen anywhere, even with robust gun control as we have in California. Our hearts go out to the family, friends, and community of the many that were impacted. Please join me in a brief moment of silence.
Thank you. And to our residents, the city and our public safety officers take the safety and security of our residents seriously. In the past year, our police department has removed 75 illegal guns from our streets, and the council has taken action to fund violence prevention programs and to improve the quality of life of our residents. As always, we are open to hearing from the public on additional ways that we can support all of you. This is a full agenda today, so I do ask the council that we keep our comments concise. And we will take a break after our public hearing. If time gets tight, there may be an item at the end regarding adult businesses that will get pushed to the next meeting, but I will speak more to that once we see how we're doing on timing for the rest of the items. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to note a clarification on Item 1F. For this item, we have a couple of changes. Council should have an updated copy in their email and on the dais. For the public, those changes are that we only have one current standing committee, which is the Finance Committee. The Public Integrity Subcommittee was previously disbanded and will be removed from that list. And Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein is unable to be the appointee for the SEVAG Energy and Environmental Resources Committee. In his stead will be Councilmember DeHart, with Councilmember Hostage remaining the alternate. I'm sorry, 1E. Thank you for the correction. I'd like to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any additional items staff or a council member would like to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or a vote?
I don't want to be removed, but I want to...
Hold on. The microphone. Mayor Pro Tem.
I want to abstain from approving the minutes from December 12 and those from December 15 that I was not present on. And if it's okay, I would like to comment on 1F, but not pull it.
Go ahead.
So, 1F is the approval of the Sister City Program Agreement, which I'm very excited about. This has been three years working on this. I helped found it as a result of the Business Retention Subcommittee with then-Councilmember Corz and Hostage's urging. It is now an official 501(c)(3). I am no longer on the board. Al Jones, who is Chair of the Board, is here. And February 6, the week of February 6, the mayor of San Miguel and a contingent from San Miguel de Yende in Mexico will be coming to Palm Springs to sign the first Sister City agreement we've had in, I think, 40 years. So it'll be very exciting. I did just want to mention for those who are interested in getting involved in Sister City, there is a lot of opportunity for education, arts, tourism, business, and other parts of the community. There was a website that you can go look at or on Facebook as well. So I didn't want to pull it. I'm just very proud that this is happening, and we'll finally come to start in fruition next month.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 1M for Mesquite. And I just want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein on the success of the Sister City program. It's really been incredible to watch him initiate that from start to finish and how wonderful he gets to vote on it now as the Mayor Pro Tem of the city. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for all of your work.
Thank you. Are there any other items? Great. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar with Items 1M removed, as well as the acknowledgement that Mayor Pro Tem Jeffrey Bernstein is abstaining from the two minutes which were mentioned. A motion... Great. Motion from Councilmember DeHart and a second from Mayor... From former Mayor Middleton. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes.
Five members... Motion passes.
Thank you so much. At this time, I invite City Attorney Ballinger to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council and members of the public, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken at a later time in the evening. City Clerk, please begin the public comment.
Our first speaker is Michael Joseph Pitkin. You have two minutes.
Michael Joseph Pitkin. All allocations, C and E. I ask for an exemption to all libraries, children's, federal law, OCAP grant funding, child abuse intervention and treatment, community-based child abuse prevention program, promoting safe and stable families program. Children have their own areas. As a theistic Satanist, I ask for 21-plus adult computer area in all libraries. I cite the Establishment Clause. I'm not advocating the overthrow of the United States, nor a communist under investigation from the Smith Act. This does not qualify for a clear and present danger test, nor imminent disorder under incitement to imminent lawless action test. I cite both the 14th Amendment, rights of citizens, and the First Amendment. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. In each case, courts must ask whether the gravity of the evil, discounted by its improbability, justifies such invasion of free speech as is necessary to avoid the danger. The advocacy of abstraction is constitutionally protected. An advocate must take positive steps to restore another person's autonomy when it is threatened or diminished; otherwise, all talk of advocacy is simply lip service. President John F. Kennedy stated, "There is no need for secret societies." Well then, stop plagiarizing works of all dark religions, occult, pagan, satanic, Wicca, atheist, agnostic, nonbelievers, Gnostic, First Nation, Old World, other religions, folk religions, and any non-light religions. Public notice, I have read plagiarized occult works in Palm Springs. Riverside County trademarked on my online religious reading at internetarchive.com the Book of Black Magic and a Pax by Arthur Edward Waite. Indian Nation, the United States, California, the County of Riverside, and Sheriff Bianco must cease and desist. I protest. I do not consent to civil rights violations against me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Hocker. You have two minutes.
Mayor Gardner and councilmembers, I just want to say thank you for approving the consent item for waiver fees for the Palm Springs Health Run and Wellness Festival. The event is free and open to the public and suitable for all family members. Desert Oasis Healthcare will have their mobile unit there doing free health screenings for blood pressure, body mass index, glucose, and diabetes. Desert Healthcare District will have their new mobile unit there doing free COVID and flu shots. Eisenhower Health will be doing first aid for the event and free respiratory screenings. Livestream Blood Bank will be doing a blood drive that day. And DAP Health will be doing HIV testing and STI. So it's an amazing free event for everybody. You can have multiple tests done all on the same day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Online, we have Jessica Spirey. You have two minutes, Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Jessica Spire. I'm a Palm Springs resident, owner of three local boutique hotels, and a member of the Community Partnership on Homelessness. My public comment relates to Agenda Item 3C, trespassing ordinances for certain public properties, specifically the airport. The Community Partnership on Homelessness advocates for the quick passage of strong ordinances, preventing unsheltered people from loitering around the airport grounds or sleeping inside the airport. Last year, the city assured us the access center across the street from the airport would not create a secondary impact in and around the airport. While we don't know if the unsheltered people staying overnight in the airport are in any way connected to the access center, we do know the situation cannot continue for obvious tourism and civic pride reasons. We'd also, at this time, I'd like to... We'd like to really thank Chief Andy Mills for taking compassionate yet assertive actions through Operation Clean Streets and Operation Relentless Sun. Chief Mills has thoughtfully segments the unsheltered populations so that the police can more effectively focus on the criminal elements that prey on other homeless individuals, those that commit crimes, both misdemeanor and felony. So the residents and the business community of Palm Springs look forward to your swift action. Thank you.
We have no other speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now move on to Item 1M, as in Mesquite. Approve appropriation of $405,000 from General Fund balance to Code Compliance Department for abatement services. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Council. The item before you this evening is a request for an allocation of funds from the General Fund to the Code Compliance Department for abatement services. Code Compliance is responsible to enforce the municipal code within the city. There are presently three properties that have been identified as a nuisance property, and they are in need of abatement services. When code was transferred to the Department of Special Program Compliance, the budget did not include an amount allocated for abatement services. So that is what we are here requesting so we can proceed with those abatement processes.
Thank you. Do we have comments from Council? Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this item. This is a larger amount than we're used to seeing on consent calendar. And so I'm not opposed to the item, but I would like more information about if we're able... You know, which properties, why, what the amounts are for each, just so we can do our fiduciary duty to assess the funds and the usage of them. I see that it says that it wasn't normally allocated. We did not allocate it from the General Fund. There is that amount left over. So I would just like more information on this item to staff. Is it an urgency where we need to approve it tonight? Or can we request that it come forward at the next meeting with a more detailed staff report so we can just look at the numbers and understand which properties?
There are three identified properties. They are all in the desert Highland Gateway area. The properties... One was deemed condemned by the building official. Two sustained significant damage. There are... There is a threat to public safety in that there are squatters on these properties. So there is that concern, and this is why we'd like to move forward at this time to proceed. The cost to abate these properties, if there is no asbestos, can be any... Starting from $50,000. If there is asbestos, $135,000 per property. That is why we requested that sum.
I see. So the $405,000 that you're requesting be appropriated right now from the General Fund balance? That would be to cover the full amount in case all three properties need asbestos remediation?
Correct.
So you did the $135,000 times three to get to that amount?
That is the amount we determined to be safe because it could be more or less, we're not certain. So we just wanted to make sure that we had the proper funds allocated.
And then if it needs less, like it's $50,000 each, let's say... I can't tell because I have no information about what the properties are, what they look like, what their status is. Then would that amount just be held in Code Compliance contractual services account for future use?
That is correct.
And for the... For you or for the city manager? So could you talk a little bit? I'm just having... I think we don't frequently approve this amount in consent unless I'm mistaken. I know we recently upped those amounts. So I was just a little surprised to see it without a lot of information. So can you just speak to the sufficiency we have in our General Fund balance and why this will be fine even though we didn't budget for it initially?
Certainly, Mayor and Council, funding is available, and we would like to use it for this particular purpose. And it would be something that we would have regularly budgeted in the future so that when there are nuisance abatements that go through a proper proceeding, we can take action on that and we can prevent some of the safety concerns that surround nuisance properties.
Thank you. And I completely support allocating that annually so that we have that funding. Is there not currently funding in the Code Compliance contractual services account?
No, there is funding. However, this amount exceeds it. Presently, our contractual services budget is at $30,000, and that would cover all of the contracts that Code Compliance currently oversees. So that's why the additional funds are needed.
Thank you. And then legally, you said these properties are in receivership. Or could you just speak to the legal ability we have to do abatement on them? I'm just worried about... I'm just wondering. I don't have the context for any of the history on these properties.
These properties have been the subject of investigation by Code Compliance. Several notices were sent out to the responsible parties. They were either ignored or corrections were not made. Therefore, they were forwarded to our city attorney's department to go to court and seek the abatement orders. That's where we are presently at.
Also, I'd like to add that we do recoup the costs of this abatement. We lien the property, or it goes on the tax roll. And so the city is reimbursed at some point when this property is sold.
That's great. Thank you. And so will that reimbursement go back to the Code Compliance contractual services account? Or will it go back to the General Fund?
It would go back to the General Fund, and then we would budget annually for abatement services through the General Fund.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Do any other councilmembers have questions at this time or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember DeHart.
I'm supportive of approving this with the stipulation that unused funds get returned to the General Fund.
I would second that motion if it's a motion, Councilmember.
So move.
Seconded.
Great. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes.
5-0, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing for an appeal by 12 at Las Palmas LLC of the decision of the Planning Commission to conditionally approve a conditional use permit, major development permit, and tentative tract map to construct a 12-unit, multiple-family residential development consisting of for sale condominiums on a .95-acre site located at 1424 Camino Norte. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision relative to a proposed 12-unit condominium development located west of North Palm Canyon Drive and south of Stevens Road. For background, the subject site is just under one acre in size and is located on the west side of Palm Canyon Drive west of the terminus of Camino Monte Vista. The site has split zoning with the west side zoned residential R2 and the east side along Palm Canyon zoned commercial C1. I'm going to talk more about the site and the proposed development in just a minute. To facilitate the development, the approval of three planning applications was required, including a conditional use permit to authorize multifamily use on the portion of the site that is zoned commercial, a major development permit to permit the multifamily residential development, and a tentative tract map to create the 12 condominium units. The applications were first considered by the Planning Commission in October, at which time the hearing was continued. at which time the hearing was continued, with direction to the applicant to make revisions to landscaping, building elevations and design, and to remove the vehicular gate that was proposed for the primary access, the only access off Camino Norte. The application returned to the Planning Commission on December 14, 2022, with revisions that addressed most of the items I just mentioned. But the revised submission continued to show the vehicular gate access on Camino Norte. At that meeting, the applicant expressed that the gates were necessary to control unauthorized access to the site that could create parking and circulation issues, as well as to respond to issues of safety and trespassing. The commission voted unanimously to approve the project, but they also included a condition that prohibited the vehicular gate, being unable to find that it met the requirements of the zoning code. I'm going to talk more about those requirements in just a minute. While the project was approved, the basis of the applicant's appeal tonight is relative to that condition, and they are seeking to have that removed, so that they can have the vehicular gate for the development off of Camino Norte. So I'll just quickly walk you through the development itself. The site in question is outlined here in black. You can see that it is on the west side of North Palm Canyon, at the terminus of East Camino Monte Vista. You can see Camino Norte on the west side of the development. That is where the primary access to the development would be located. The vacant site to the north is the site of the ALO mixed-use development, which is for, I believe, around 76 units, and has yet to begin construction. So here's the overall site plan and landscape plan. You can see here the 12 units. There are four units sort of located on that southwest portion of the site. And then there are a further eight units located on the east portion of the site. You can see the primary and only entry point being there at Camino Norte on the east, on the west side of the development, that would come in and provide access to each of these units. Each unit will have its own garage. There are three required guest parking spaces, which are shown on the plan. Each also has an individual pool. In addition, the units that are along Palm Canyon, the eight on the right side of the plan, will also have an accessory dwelling unit associated with them. Here, we can see some project rendering. So this is the view from Palm Canyon. So you can see that there are three-story residential units located sort of back from Palm Canyon. And in the forefront, closest to Palm Canyon, are those accessory units that I described. You can see here, they're sort of mid-century in design. And as a result of conversations with the Planning Commission, certain changes were made to the architectural detail to provide, you know, some additional activation along the Palm Canyon frontage, as well as some additional landscaping to activate that streetscape. Here is the view from Camino Norte on the west side of the development. You can see on the image, the top, the gate, that is the subject of the appeal tonight, which would restrict access into the development and the parking in there. Here are some additional elevations, again, from the Palm Canyon and Camino Norte frontages, just to kind of give you a sense of the overall development. And finally, sort of a bird's eye perspective, again, from both the east and west side of the development, looking at the overall plan. So in terms of the gates, the zoning code indicates that controlled access may be approved if the development will be significantly impacted by unauthorized parking or traffic impacts from adjacent uses, and there will be no negative impact on adjacent uses. The applicant has argued that without gates, unauthorized vehicles may enter the development and use the three required guest parking spaces, creating circulation issues within those internal roads. It was the assessment of both staff and the Planning Commission that an internal road with only one point of ingress and egress and no through connection would not invite unauthorized traffic or parking. As a result, and in light of the requirements of the zoning code I mentioned previously, the Planning Commission concurred with staff's inclusion of a condition that prohibited the use of vehicular gates for this development. The commission also suggested that in order to respond to the applicant's concerns, additional guest parking should be provided, and that site access could be controlled via signage and appropriate enforcement of trespassing. The commission's vote to approve and to include this condition was unanimous, and the applicant did, I'm sorry, did appeal that decision within the statutory timeframe to do so, which is the basis of the hearing tonight. Staff's recommendation is to uphold the Planning Commission's determination as outlined in the resolution that was included with your report. That does conclude my presentation, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions. I do believe the applicant is here to speak to the site as well tonight.
Thank you so much. Before we take the applicant, do we have any questions from council for staff, for our planning director? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So just to be clear, this is a private driveway. It's not a public road where anyone has access to. And if they wanted to have, I know there was an issue about controlling traffic. If they wanted to have a stop sign at the end of the driveway, is there any limitation on that?
No. In fact, I think that that was part of the conversation with the Planning Commission, and I think that having a stop sign there is something that the engineering department is looking for.
And is this an area where the Palm Canyon is often, is there often available parking? Or is it often hard to find, like, farther south?
In this particular area of Palm Canyon, I can only speak of my personal experience. I think it's a little easier to find parking here than it is further down Palm Canyon. But certainly, there are challenges with parking along Palm Canyon.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for the staff report. Written staff report, really excellent. Appreciate that. I just had some questions about the underlying general plan designation and zoning. So it says that the general plan is high-density residential and mixed use, and that the zoning is C1 retail and R2 for residential. So could you just explain a little bit about the general plan and the zoning designation, and how this project complies?
Sure. So as you mentioned, it's split both in terms of its general plan designation and its zoning designation. So the portion of the project, the project is split between the high-density residential that you mentioned and the mixed-use development. And that establishes, it does permit a range of uses, including residential and commercial uses, at certain densities. This project is coming in at a density level that is permitted by both of those designations. So I think, under the designation, I believe the minimum amount of units that would need to be on this site are eight or nine, and it goes up somewhere to 20 or 25 units. So this is coming in at 12. So it is within the range of density that is contemplated by those designations. The split zoning, you have the C1 zoning that is really along the Palm Canyon frontage, and then you have the R2 zoning behind it, really closer to Camino Norte. Again, residential uses are permitted in the C1. It doesn't establish that commercial uses are mandatory, but those residential uses, multifamily uses, are required through a conditional use permit, which is what necessitated the conditional use permit associated with this. So they do comply with the underlying official plan, or sorry, general plan designation and zoning code requirements.
Thank you. That's helpful. I know council, we had extensive conversations with the ALO or Gabe project about activating Palm Canyon, and council has had extensive conversations about really relying on mixed use and retail for Palm Canyon, because that's our main retail area in the city. And so I was just wondering about the underlying zoning. So that's helpful. So when you say the minimum, there's multiple general plan designations. So what is the minimum that you're referring to?
So when you average out those two designations,
Average.
It ends up with a minimum of eight units per acre for this site. For the 0.95 acres that this site is, a minimum of eight units would be required on this site. They're at 12. So they are exceeding the minimum, and they are below the maximum threshold. And I'm sorry that I don't have those numbers in front of me, but they are within the range that is permitted by the general plan designation. And to respond to your point about the commercial uses, that is a conversation that we had with the applicants on this project, given that it was a large part of the conversation on the ALO development, whether there could be some kind of commercial use here, activation of Palm Canyon. I think the size and configuration of this particular site makes that difficult. It doesn't have a great deal of frontage along Palm Canyon. And when you factor in commercial parking requirements that would be associated with commercial uses here, it really becomes difficult to pencil out. So we focused instead, or the Planning Commission focused instead, on architectural design to help sort of at least give a continuous streetscape and activate it through different means than active commercial uses.
Thank you. Could you just go back to that point? So I got resident questions about the activation of Palm Canyon, and if there's just a wall along Palm Canyon, and how really, what the pedestrian experience will be like. So could you speak to that a little bit, or show us in one of those slides what the thinking was there with Planning Commission and staff?
If we can throw the presentation back up, I can go to one of the renderings.
If I can interrupt quickly, can we just get some clarification, though, on what's before us right now? Because are we able to make any changes other than require either allowing a gate or not, or going along with Planning Commission, excuse me?
So as I understand it, and I will look to the city attorney to correct me, but, you know, the appeal is relative to the condition that the Planning Commission put on their approval restricting the gates. However, because it is before the council, it is a de novo hearing, and I believe the council does have the ability to modify the proposal or make a different determination than the Planning Commission did.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that point. Thank you. Go ahead, councilmember.
And if we can pull that up again. Actually, here is the slide, Councilmember Hostage, that speaks to the density and the designation. I did have it as a backup here. So you can see the high-density residential allows a range of 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre, and that is .6 acres of the site, so that's a range of 9 to 18. The mixed use has a maximum of 15 dwelling units per acre, so that allows up to five units for a range of 9 to 23. So again, we're closer to the bottom end of that range, but we are within the range. And then going to one of the renderings, I think this one is a little bit better. It doesn't show really well on this rendering, because it's sort of grayed out to allow you to see the architecture behind it. But there are these planting boxes in front of the development that are 10 feet deep. Five feet are on in the city right of way, or five are on the property. So they will be landscaped, and they will include shade trees. When this goes to the Architectural Review Committee, that will be one of the things that they look at, to look at the species of the trees, et cetera, and sort of the landscaping details. But the idea here is there will be landscaping there to give some shading, and also to help sort of give a nice pedestrian experience along Palm Canyon. This rendering does also show there were changes to the architectural details for those accessory dwelling units that are located there along the frontage to provide a little more transparency with the clerestory windows and a little more architectural design wrapping the buildings to, you know, we're not going to have storefronts there that people can go in and out of, but the idea is that the architectural detail there will feel a little more inviting to people walking by.
Thank you. And how tall are those walls there? Are those brick walls? Could you, I'm sorry to council, I ask so many questions of staff, but I figure it's just easier to get these out now, and then I won't ask them later. So could you, while you have that, could you detail that? What the pedestrian experience will be like, what those walls look like, and how tall they are?
I believe the walls are 10 feet high, but I may defer to the applicant to answer that specifically.
Thank you. And then I was just wondering if the applicant's relying on state law to increase? So it sounds like they're not relying on state law to increase the density with ADUs or anything like that.
Under the city's ADU ordinance, which is based off of state law, those are permitted to be there within the density ranges permitted.
Is this luxury housing?
I haven't heard it described as luxury, but I think the applicant can speak to their marketability.
Thank you. I have no further questions for you. Thank you so much for taking mine. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. So city clerk, do we have any registered speakers?
The appellate's are here. There are no other speakers on this item other than the two appellate's.
Great. If we can have the appellate's approach, you have five minutes.
So we have Ernest Vincent and Dennis Cunningham. You have five minutes together.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Cunningham. I represent Palm Springs Modern Homes, and we're the developers at 12 at Las Palmas. I understand the city's policy, I do understand the city's policy regarding gated communities, and that's what we're discussing tonight, I think. My understanding is that our city would prefer developments to interact with their neighborhoods. When you have a neighborhood where the streets flow from one to the next, a gated community within that development would disrupt the neighborly flow. The 12 at Las Palmas, there are no flow through streets there, threading through the community. And the 12 has basically, as discussed earlier, 150-foot drive with a turnaround serving the 12 units only. The surrounding neighborhood is primarily single-family homes that are almost 100% gated. The primary concern after the meeting with our neighbors, because we did meet with the Neighborhood Committee, which I think you all have letters here for, and also a letter from Ingrid Verdiere, who owns the commercial building on our southeast corner. And I think if you look at her letter in depth, you'll see the situations that she deals with over there on a daily basis. The primary concern after the meeting with the neighbors is the curve on Villa Norte that was shown earlier to the north of our project. Gating the 12 units would create some degree of traffic calming. By having the cars leaving and having to stop at a gate rather than the gate opening, you know, and wait till the gate opens, and then it's a stopping point. With no gates, the cars leaving could basically roll through, in a sense, and possibly interact with the flow on that traffic. There was one question brought up, I think by Planning Commission, that asked if a stop sign could be put on out as you come out. And the answer to that from the Public Works Department, from, if you have an area which is across the street, it would be on the west side, it's not curbing gutted, and therefore putting street signs in, I don't think are allowed from that, from my conversation with folks. And also a stop sign, I don't think it's a matter of someone's just pulling out and going about their day. I'm not saying people are going to bomb out of the development, but having a gate, you have to stop, and you have to think, and then you have to move forward. And I do hope you've read all the neighborhood letters, and I hope especially Ingrid Verdiere's letter with all the concerns. And you vote in favor of the gates. And if you have any other questions, I'm available. I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is anyone else planning to speak? For the applicant? Great. Please go ahead, sir. And how many minutes are remaining?
Two minutes.
Great. You have two additional minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here this evening representing 18 neighbors who live within 500-foot radius of this project, and they are in favor of the gates at this project.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Are you making a public comment for yourself, or are you part of the applicant?
I'm speaking for him.
No.
I just want two minutes. It's not my turn?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So we're, you can, we can give you a moment to speak, but at the moment, we're talking to the applicant of the project, so who, the people who are proposing it?
I just wanted, in his favor.
Oh, okay. Well, that was supposed to come before that, but since, but let's finish this discussion first with these two gentlemen, and then I'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we're following process. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Ernest Vincent, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything to add to what Dennis said, but I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead, then, sir, and have you give your two minutes of public comment? And then we'll go back to the applicant and have them answer council questions. We're just a little out of order tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Garth Gilpin's the name. I'm here this evening representing 18 neighbors who live within the 500-foot radius of this project, and they are in favor of the gates at this project. The gate issue is one of safety to these neighbors. It could possibly have been resolved if the Planning Commission had acknowledged our concerns and complaints when we responded to the commission's 500-foot radius letter in which we requested a traffic study. The same 18 hired an attorney to write a letter requesting a traffic attorney. In the meeting at December, Mr. Newell summarized the legal letter and stated the city attorney felt it had no merit. He also told the council that several residents had signed it. Here's a copy of the letter, and there's 18 residents' names on the bottom of it, so it lends a new meaning to the word "several." At the same December meeting, the commissioners were never told of the 500-foot response letter from the 18 committees. These 18 people, Mayor, Council, who live within the 500-foot radius, this letter was sent, and here are the names of the 18 people that were on the legal. that were on the legal letter. The blind-curved street is only 24 and 1/2 feet wide, and a new electrical panel precludes it from being widened. The new adjoining project next door has an ingress-egress that is only to be used by emergency vehicles. This neighborhood has been concerned before about this curve. At the December meeting, I asked if they had received our letter, which is this one, and they said yes. I said, would you please put it on the screen? They said no. I said, can I ask a question? The answer was, you're not asking things of this commission.
Your two minutes are up.
The Planning Commission policy statement on our city website states, "The Commission recommends policies to the city council in a public forum to ensure the community can provide input." I ask one of this.
Your two minutes are up.
When the project comes up for consent, the 18 neighbors feel the project should be returned to the planning with a recommendation it needs a traffic study. We need to know if we need speed bumps, red curbs, stop signs, and hopefully gates.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Pardon?
At this time, the public hearing is closed. So is there, are there any questions for the appellant at this time from council? Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Without the gate, would you still go forward with the project?
Yes, we would go forward with the project. We'd spent about a year and a half approximately prior to with Flynn and the department to determine how this would all go together. However, you have all of the support documents for the gates, and I think it would make a much better community.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are not other questions, on behalf of council, are there comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protam, and followed by Councilmember Middleton.
So first of all, I just want to commend the developer. I know a lot of your projects, and they're very attractive. I know you've done quite a few in the city. And this one in particular, I think is, it's a very attractive project. I know there's not storefront, but I think the shade is something that is important in our walking areas, so I like that. I commend that it's next to what is potentially an affordable housing place. I did look, I did watch the whole Planning Commission and watch the, look carefully at the plans. In terms of whether you would get other people using the parking, I know there is, you know, use only three spaces. It does not seem like it's even visible from when you would drive up. They're sort of hidden off to the side. It would seem odd to me that somebody, especially if it's private property or no trespassing, that they would do that. I can't see people barreling out full speed from 150-foot driveway, especially if they're the residents, it's not a lot of traffic. I would look at, you know, other types of slow signs, or if there is an option to do a traffic sign, but certainly a cautionary thing to yield and private property. I particularly would not see a need to have gates here, but I do like the project, and I think it should go forward, and I think it'll be a benefit to the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Over the course of the years that I've been on Planning Commission and City Council, we've had lots of difference on whether or not we like the idea of gates. And the city has made a determination that we don't want to be a collection of gated communities. But that's not what we're presented with here. This is a totally, completely enclosed site, a mansion, and that mega mansion wanted to have a fence, in essence, a gate, across their driveway. They could do so. But instead, what we have are 12 relatively affordable units in our, have the same right that any other homeowner, being a single-family homeowner, if that's how this was being treated, would be treated. There's no cross-traffic that is going on here. The look from the street of what you would expect to see in any kind of community where you have fences across driveways. This is a drive, this is also a challenging piece of property for which we have a developer who's come up with an incredibly creative solution and builds some density to those homes, things that we have said we wanted. We have a developer who's building off of the downtown area, something we've said we want to have done. We have a developer who, when they choose to build an arc, and so over and over again, actually comes up with the financing and builds the homes. So we don't have stalled projects with this developer. We have the residents of the area asking for the gates to the owner, Mr. Cunningham wants to have, and we have history with Mr. Cunningham building gates with 64 at the RIV. I was part of approval process, and the gates improved that community and did not, and have not had any sense of breaking down, causing a community not to be, something that could be accessed. And I'm going to, lastly, we have a homelessness crisis in our city, and every developer who comes is going to face the question of potential buyers being very concerned and wanting to have that level of safety that a gate gives. I think it is time for us at City Council to give greater flexibility in commission, to provide gates where they are appropriate in exactly this kind of case, and I will enthusiastically vote to overturn Planning Commission's decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstidge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could just ask a question for city staff, either for planning or for legal, what the findings are that we're making tonight? So I see that, I just want to follow the law here. So I see the staff report cites the community design element, saying that we, the city, decided to prohibit gated communities and entries, and then the vehicular access rule and the zoning code, saying that controlled access is discouraged, but the Planning Commission can approve it where the applicant can establish that the development will be significantly impacted by unauthorized parking from adjacent uses or traffic impacts, and will not negatively impact unauthorized parking, traffic, or public safety. So can you just explain for the city council? I know it's a de novo review, but can you just explain what findings we're required to make tonight?
Councilmember Holstidge, while we're looking for the specific findings for the council's benefit, I do want to clarify for the record, this is not a de novo review. Had this matter been pulled up by one of the council members or the council itself, that would be a de novo review. In this case, because it was appealed in the way that it was, the council really should be looking just at the one issue that has been appealed from, and that is the gate issue.
So the entire permit, or the conditional use permit, is not in front of us? Just that issue that's pulled?
Correct. You still, you still need to, you would still need to uphold the findings of the Planning Commission as part of that, but really what the item that's been appealed from is the gate issue. And Mr. Fag is available to address the findings issue.
Thank you.
In terms of the findings for this particular item, what the city council should look at is consistency with the city's general plan, which is where the language relative to gates lies. In this particular instance, there's been testimony given and comments from the council that this is not, in the case of walling off an entire neighborhood, it does not obstruct the network of streets. And so if your findings were such, that would be that they are consistent with the general plan in that it does not wall off an entire neighborhood.
Thank you. So I want to stand by the general plan. That's the city's longstanding policy. I've sat here for five years on City Council, going on six, where we've denied nearly every single gate request, and we get many, many of them. We've had conversations and debate about if gates make neighborhoods safer because of alleged public safety incidents or alleged homelessness incidents. And we've gone around and around, and often the council majority has determined that gates do not make us safer, but make us feel safer, and actually that can lead to public safety issues as well. So I do not support reversing the Planning Commission's decision. I agree with their findings that the general plan prohibits gated communities. This is a gated community, and we discourage controlled access, and I can't make any of the findings for exceptions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I think if, if the, the one item that stands out to me that we really did put a lot of emphasis on, and that's the, within the guidelines that the applicant could establish, the impact of, on public safety. And it was a line item that I noticed in the applicant's letter. And I live in that neighborhood, and I see it almost a daily basis. And I realize the rest of this block is going to be developed. We don't know how long that's going to take. And when the whole block is developed, that certainly is going to have an impact on the transient issues that occur on this block, to the trespassing, to the damage that occurs on this block, to the surrounding businesses. We don't know how long that's going to take. And I think if Planning Commission had the ability and guidance from, you know, the council, that we want to look seriously at some of these public safety issues. And if it does warrant a gate, that the commission might have that leeway to give heavier consideration to approving a gate. And if the applicant can come back in a year or two years and show that there is public safety cause, and there's a reason to put the gate in, and if we would approve that in a year or two years, I'm in favor of letting the applicant and the neighbors that have asked for this, let that gate be installed. And if, in the reverse, if there was a way that the language could be that they would have to remove it after two years if it wasn't proving effective, I'm in favor of, just on the safety side, that we allow this development to have the gate in that community and putting a lot of weight on the neighborhood, the neighbors' comments with those 18 houses within 500 feet. That's a huge percentage of houses within the area surrounding this lot. So at the moment, I would be in favor of allowing the gate.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move to overturn the decision of the plan and to allow gates to be installed, and to take Councilmember DeHart's suggestion that the developer be required to come back two years after the project has been completed and report on the gates with regard to security.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, or unless there are additional comments from council? Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I want to just confirm with Panning. We have let other developments approve gates later on, after they were built? Yes.
I'm not aware of any that are coming after the fact to add gates, so I will, I will look to...
Yeah, I can think of a couple of instances where we've had developments come into the Planning Commission to request gates, but those requests have been few and far between. Typically, they have occurred where other development has suddenly come nearby, or there has been a significant increase in crime. And looking at those reasons, the Planning Commission has approved at least two instances that I can think of in about the last five to seven years.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstidge.
No.
Count, Mayor Protam Bernstein?
No.
Mayor Gardner?
No.
Two yeses, three noes. Motion fails.
City Clerk, do we need to make an additional motion at this time, or is that sufficient?
That's sufficient.
Okay. Thank you very much. Since we are quite ahead of schedule, we will move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is Item 3A. It's the approval of city manager employment agreement with Scott Stiles and the verbal report regarding compensation terms. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers and members of the public, I'm very pleased to present to you for your consideration a potential approval of a city manager employment agreement with Mr. Scott Stiles. As the council is aware, following the announcement of Mr. Clifton's departure in July, the city council engaged the services of executive recruiter Frank Rojas of Coffin Associates. The city council then engaged in a nationwide search for public agency executives and advertised in at least a dozen different periodicals and sources. The city received 68 resumes as a result of that. Those 68 resumes were reviewed and narrowed down to 18 candidates whose qualifications were further reviewed by the city council, and the top five were invited for interviews by the city council. As part of that interview process, the city council conducted several interviews, several rounds of interviews, and also engaged community panels to seek input from the community and stakeholders. After the final interview on Friday, January 13, the city council announced its selection of Mr. Scott Stiles as the next Palm Springs City Manager. Mr. Stiles is an International City Manager Association credentialed city manager. He currently serves as a city manager in Garden Grove, California, where he has served since 2015. Prior to his service there in Garden Grove, Mr. Stiles served as both interim and assistant city manager in the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, where he served since 2003. Mr. Stiles and the city attorney's office and the city's executive recruiter engaged in negotiations for his employment contract, which resulted in the attachment to the staff report before you tonight. In accordance with the California Government Code, we are providing this verbal report regarding the compensation that's provided in that employment agreement. The basic terms of that employment agreement include commencement of term on Monday, March 6, 2023, with a four-year term, an annual salary of $325,000 per year, an auto allowance of $500 per month, a PEPRA-PERS arrangement with 2% at 62, 10 hours of vacation with 40 per month accruing with 40 hours of admin leave per year, 12 months of severance, which reduces over the term of the agreement, a payment of $12,000 to be used for moving expenses, as well as $3,000 per month for the first six months for temporary housing allowance. I think everybody who has met Mr. Stiles would agree that he comes well-credentialed, and everybody has been in favor of him. would agree that he comes well credentialed and everybody has been in favor of him. The city council voted in closed session 5-0 for the appointment as a reminder. And certainly everything I've heard from community members and folks that know him in the industry has been positive. So with that, I will submit this staff report and answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Does council have any questions at this time? Looks like no questions, but I'm sure there are likely to be comments. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Well, I have to say, Ron and I were not involved in the very initial part of the, the city manager, but, search. But I think we all liked Scott very much. He was, I think he had unanimous approval when we met him. He has a lot of experience, which is really interesting for Palm Springs. Garden Grove has a very diverse community. They have a large Vietnamese and Latinx population. He's put together a navigation center. They rely on tourism. A couple of things that I liked is that he, and he's also had a lot of experience in everything from legal to real estate, human resources. He has great stability. He's been in Garden Grove for seven years. I think he was planning to stay there. I think this is the only job he, he applied for. He was in Cincinnati for 20-something years. But what, to me, was most important is when he met with some of the key department heads who all supported him. And he had a great management style, one that really was about pushing, about giving staff and the team opportunities to have their voices heard, to run, make decisions. So I think he is a great choice for Palm Springs, and I look forward to working with him.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? All right. Oh, Councilmember Middleton, please.
It's hard to top what Jeffrey had just said, but one of the things that we tried to be clear on throughout this process, and both the former council and the new council were very unified on this, is a leader who was going to be able to inspire all of our employees at City Hall, all of the many departments that we have. We have a very good team of people working for the city, but also someone who would engage and work very closely with the community in Palm Springs. And Scott Stiles impressed us very much with his ability to do both of those things. He's a known mentor, and he is someone who gets out and attends community events that are going on in the community that he serves. So we're looking forward to, and to be the stable influence that we need in the city manager's seat.
Thank you very much. I know that Scott is watching. Welcome. We are very excited to have you join our team and to invite your family to our community. I know that his wife, Kelly, was Googling all of the restaurants and was excited to, to check off her list and visit all of our local shops and really just appreciate the enthusiasm for Palm Springs, not just from Scott, but also by his, his wife and two daughters. At this time, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve...
A second.
I move that we approve the city manager employment agreement with Scott Stiles as presented.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember DeHart and a second from Mayor Protem Bernstein. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
5-0, motion passes.
Thank you. Well, we are moving quickly. I see council agreed with my advice to be concise. The next item on the agenda is item 3B. It's a request for this, by the city of Palm Springs for adoption of an urgency ordinance to implement Senate Bill 897 requirements for accessory dwelling units. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. Item 3B relates to a request for the council to pass an urgency ordinance to establish temporary regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. This urgency ordinance would remain in effect until such time that staff can return with a full ordinance that would be subject to review by the planning commission and a hearing here at city council. The need for this urgency ordinance arises from revisions to state law that took effect on January 1st of this year as a result of Senate Bill 897 or SB 897. The general effect of those changes were to further codify state regulations that make ADUs and junior ADUs broadly permitted throughout the state, including charter cities such as Palm Springs, and to further limit the ability of local jurisdictions to regulate ADUs beyond a limited set of objective standards. The city's existing ordinance regulating ADUs is already quite permissive. However, as a result of these recent changes, it has become null and void as a matter of law, and it may not be enforced until it is brought into compliance with the changes to state law, leaving ADUs only subject to a limited set of state regulation with no local oversight. In terms of the changes that were enacted by SB 897, as I mentioned, they generally seek to further restrict the ability of local jurisdictions to deny or prevent ADUs except in limited circumstances. Specifically, SB 897 directs that any permit for an ADU cannot be denied on the basis that it involves a nonconforming lot or building, a building with outstanding code violations, or in unauthorized or unpermitted structures unless these conditions present a threat to public health and safety. Sorry, let me go back one slide. It further obligates municipalities to clearly outline in writing any reason for the denial of an ADU and that applicants be provided with a clear list of issues and be afforded the opportunity to correct those issues to obtain approval. Related to development standards, today's rules, which are reflected in our local ordinance, state that the maximum of height of an ADU can generally be 16 feet. However, SB 897 has increased that to 18 feet for any ADU that is proposed within, sorry, any detached ADU that is proposed within a half mile of a transit stop or a multifamily lot, and up to 25 feet or two stories for any attached ADU where it's attached to a principal dwelling. The maximum there is 25 feet. If the underlying zoning has a height limit that is lower than 25, it's subject to that height limit, but it's up to 25 feet. SB 897 also expands where a junior ADU is permitted to include any attached garage. Today's rules state that they are permitted within an existing or proposed single-family structure, but we're not clear on whether that included the attached garage. So state law has now clarified that it does include the garage. It also clarified that if the junior ADU shares a bathroom with the principal residence, that there is an internal entrance to get from the junior ADU into the main living space of that principal residence to provide access to that bathroom. Regarding ADUs on multifamily lots, SB 897 has also made additional exception for ADUs on existing substandard multifamily lots to clarify that setback rules must be relaxed where necessary, and that no changes can be required to the existing multifamily building in order to accommodate the ADU. So if it's noncomplying, we can't require as a condition of the ADU that changes to the multifamily building be made to bring it into compliance. Again, unless there's a threat to public health and safety. And finally, SB 897 has also directed that a local jurisdiction cannot deny a permit to legalize an unauthorized ADU regardless of when it was constructed, unless it prevents a threat to public health and safety. And so today's rules, I believe, do not put an obligation on municipalities to legalize ADUs that were constructed before the original ADU laws were conceptualized, and this would change that to say any unauthorized ADU should be legal, should be able to be legalized. Again, our local ordinance is already quite permissive, but this urgency ordinance would enact necessary revisions to remain compliant with these recent changes at the state level and allow our existing ordinance to become enforceable again until such time that we can bring back a fuller ordinance to make these changes permanent. In terms of next steps, we will be working on the broader ordinance that will be developed with the input of the planning commission prior to returning for a hearing of the city council later this spring. There are likely other development standards and regulations that could be clarified or cleaned up to ensure that our ordinance remains effective in light of these changes, so we'll bring back those for discussion in the coming months. The urgency ordinance would be rescinded at such time that the permanent ordinance becomes effective. And with that, I conclude my presentation and I am able to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council on this item? Councilmember DeHart?
What's the timeline that's expected for the regular ordinance to come back to council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping March or April, depending on how quickly we can get it before the planning commission. But we're already looking, you know, we have, we have sort of the outline here in what's before you. So we have the revised section of the zoning code and our local ordinance. The piece that we need to, to look at a little bit further are what other changes may need to be made to reflect the changes that were made in the state law, as well as, you know, looking at other opportunities we may have to, you know, for example, obtain pro-housing designation or other ways of obtaining state grants and funding. So we want to see if there's a way to roll those conversations together. So ideally, March or April.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you so much. Last time, we did probably hours of work just as the city council, not even counting staff's time and the planning commission's time, making sure our ADU ordinance was pro-housing and included council's priorities, et cetera. So instead of comparing those now and doing that work now, it sounds like that's the work that staff and planning commission will include in their review of an ordinance, a permanent ordinance that will come forward?
That's right. I think the idea in bringing this as an urgency ordinance today is, again, because the changes took effect January 1st, our ordinance is technically no longer in effect. So again, any ADU would be subject just to a limited set of standards at the state level. And so this urgency ordinance allows us to ensure that all of that hard work is still enforceable and in effect, and then we can come back in the future with something more thought out.
Thank you. And this, did you say there's a expected timeline for a permanent ordinance to come forward?
Hoping the spring, March or April.
Thank you. And do we have any data or can we have it when that comes forward about the ADU permits and construction in the city? I know a lot of the debate statewide that this council and others have debated about will this actually turn into units? And I know this, prior councils have said, we want units. So is there a way that we can kind of analyze how the old ADU ordinance worked when we update it?
Absolutely. We can, we can certainly try to pull some data to see, you know, what was in the pipeline and certainly what kinds of impediments people were facing and as we analyze what we might do, need to do to further tweak the rules.
Thank you. That'd be great. Sometimes we don't know how our policy will actually be implemented and if there are barriers that we don't know about. So that'd be great. Thank you. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any further comments on this item? Not seeing any. Thank you so much for bringing this forward, and we look forward to the final ordinance coming along. I know this is a great opportunity for people to provide additional housing, especially for students or for seniors or just anybody that needs something small. So we really appreciate your work on this and the work of the planning commission. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion by Councilmember Middleton and a second by Mayor Protem Bernstein. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
5-0, motion passes.
City Clerk, can you read the ordinance title?
An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, amending Section 932314 of the city of Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll take a quick five-minute break because I know the next couple of items are likely to generate quite a bit of discussion. So if council can be back at 6:55, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I call this meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is Item 3C. Oops, or no, we, now I'm getting mixed up. Yes, okay. To introduce an ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, amending Chapter 16.04 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code entitled General Rules and Regulations and Section 11.08.080 relating to trespass on residential and public property. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, the item before you tonight is possible first reading introduction of an ordinance, and the ordinance deals with two things. One is it deals with rules and regulations for trespass on airport property, and then the second portion of the ordinance deals with trespass on public property generally. So with regard to the first item, like many communities, the City of Palm Springs has experienced its fair share of issues regarding homelessness and the secondary impacts of those, and one of those is, of which is homeless individuals using the city's airport for shelter. Over the past year, the City Attorney's Office has received reports from the Airport Department, as well as the Police Department, of homeless individuals using the airport for shelter, sometimes for many days and weeks at a time. And so they sought the City Attorney's Office assistance in drafting an ordinance that would ensure that the airport property is used for airport purposes. The Police Department has shared with us the City of LA's ordinance with regard to LAX, and that ordinance provides basically that no person shall enter any restricted area that's posted as being closed to the public except those who may be duly authorized to do so. The City Attorney's Office looked at that, and also received reports from the LA City Attorney's Office, and it's our understanding that they don't have any problems enforcing that, notwithstanding that the City Attorney's Office has drafted an ordinance that we believe is more legally defensible in terms of providing more specificity with regard to what types of activities are allowed, and what legitimate purposes are allowed on airport property. And so the proposed ordinance before you tonight essentially says that if you are not at the airport for a legitimate airport business, then you are subject to removal as trespass. The ordinance then goes on to delineate several examples of what legitimate airport business is. That includes working at the airport, engaging in permitted commerce, such as shopping at the airport restaurants, or shops, or renting, or dropping off rental cars, conducting an activity for which a permit has been issued by the city, departing the airport as a ticketed airline passenger, arriving at the airport as a ticketed airline passenger, engaging in airline for customer services purposes, rescheduling a flight, filing a claim for lost luggage, as well as waiting for or escorting an individual engaged in the activities listed above. There are probably other legitimate activities, and certainly if the City Council has examples that they would like to include, in addition to the ones that are proposed, we'd be willing to include those as well. The point here is that this proposed ordinance is a bit more specific than LA's, and to that extent, the City Attorney believes that it is going to be more legally defensible if ever challenged. With regard to the enforcement of this provision, I think if you ask the Police Department, they will tell you they are not looking to use this ordinance to put people in jail. The purpose of this is really to just ensure that the airport property is used for airport purposes and not as a shelter. The city is certainly doing everything it can to provide shelter and other resources for homeless individuals. And so it'd be my expectation, and I think the City Council's expectation, that before anybody is either removed for trespassing or cited for trespassing, that offers of assistance of either shelter or other resources would first be provided. And I believe that's the Police Department's current practice right now. So that's the first portion of the ordinance before you tonight, dealing with the airport. The second component of the ordinance before you tonight deals with public property in general. The city currently has an ordinance that defines trespass on public property. However, in order for it to be effective, there needs to be rules and regulations promulgated by the city manager and approved by the City Council, or for other public agencies by their chief executive and governing board. So for example, for school property, it would be probably the superintendent and the school board. For Water District, it might be the general manager and the board of directors of that Water District. With regard to the city property, the city's charter delegates much authority to the city manager with regard to general administration, oversight, and management of city property. And so this ordinance is being proposed to align itself with that charter provision dealing with delegation of authority, and remove the requirement for City Council approval of the rules and regulations, at least for city property. For other public agencies, the ordinance still requires approval by their governing board of the rules and regulations before it becomes a trespass on their public property. So those are the two components of this ordinance. I'm certainly available to answer any questions, well as other staff. We've got the Airport Director, as well as the Police Chief here, available to answer any questions with regard to their departments.
Thank you very much for that report. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments on this item? Mayor, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. My question is for Harry and for the Police Chief. Does this ordinance, as it's drawn, give you the authority that is needed to be able to remove those individuals who are sleeping in the airport?
Yes, it does, for the Airport Director.
And Councilmember Middleton, yes, it does for the police also. After warning them and asking them to leave, we certainly can remove them.
All right. And is there anything else that you need or would want, other than what you are being given here?
At this time, from the Police Department's perspective, this is more than adequate to regain the cleanliness of the airport.
All right. Do you have the resources that you need in order to be able to enforce this ordinance?
I do.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Garner. So I've been to the airport, and I know what a problem this is, and I know it's been tough on you and Harry, you and your staff, and I know it's actually been difficult for the, I know the USO members and many of our passengers, some of, I think, have had things stolen or attempted, and I think there was somebody living there for six weeks for a while. So I understand, and I support this. I want to ask a couple of questions. And also, it says in here, you've had more than 2 million. I think you were close to 3 million passengers last year. Is that right?
That's correct, close to 3 million.
So we talk about legitimate airport business that is engaged, engaging in permitted commerce, such as shopping at the airport, restaurants, or shops, or renting, dropping off a rental car, but what prevents someone from getting a cup of coffee and bringing ten, and you can wait for or escort an individual? So what happens with 10 people, one person buying a cup of coffee, and being there for hours, or overnight?
So, thank you for that question. I'll answer for the airport. You know, we routinely inspect our facilities, our operations staff routinely inspect our facilities, and we generally have a good idea of who's there for business or for travel, and who might be loitering or seeking shelter. So as we go throughout our day and observe what's happening, whether it's via our inspections or through CCTV, we begin to get a sense for when we may need to engage with our Police Department, or when we won't need that support. Once our folks are notified, we then refer to the Police Department to make the ultimate decision. We'll stop usually and speak with the individuals first, just to get a sense for if they need help, you know, or if they're waiting for their flight or whatever. But once we've done that vetting, we usually refer to the Police Department to keep an eye on them, and then from there, I think the Chief can speak to how enforcement would work.
Now it's on. Like in much of law, or criminal law is concerned, it's a test of reasonableness. What's reasonable under the circumstances to an objective person? So if a person is sitting there with a cup of coffee in their hand, and they're sipping their coffee, and it takes a while, then that's obviously going to be fine. Many of us do that. But if it becomes a cup of coffee that lasts seven or eight hours, that becomes more unreasonable, and that's when we have engaged the person in dialogue and discussion, and based on what they're telling us, that can become, get to the point where now we no longer are at a place where we're discussing, and now we're taking action. But we will, of course, collaborate with the airport, as well as the people in the airport, to make sure that we're seeing things correctly, and making sure that we're offering resources if that is what's needed.
So you're comfortable this doesn't give them too much leeway? That was really my question. I know that you wouldn't, I just don't want someone to start using this to claim that they could be there. So, okay. And you said if you remove them, you would help find them shelter. So where will you take them if you remove them?
Well, we had people living in the airport, for instance, and we sent them across the street to the well, and many of them took up, them up on the offer there, especially initially. And there are other resources available, such as hotel vouchers and other things that we can get access to should we need to. But the reality is, for many of these people, it becomes a matter of choice, and they have to be adults and find out where they can go, should they so choose. And I was out at the airport numerous times, talked with many of the people that were there, and all of them were functioning, capable people that I spoke with, and certainly could find a place on their own, should they so choose.
I guess my last question. Do you think the boxing, the facility at the Boxing Center, or what was the Boxing Center, has caused part of this problem, or just is part of a whole systemic problem we have in the city?
I don't know that it caused a problem at that location. You know, from what I learned from my officers who were stationed at the airport, is that one person took our residency, and then specifically solicited other homeless individuals to take our residency there also. That happened to be the person that we had a long discussion with and decided to go back to Toronto, Canada. And so I think that, you know, once that got started, now we just need a leverage point to say the airport is no longer an acceptable place to be.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the comprehensive staff report, so thank you for presenting the details that you presented in the report today. You know, the other thing that I appreciate is, at first, when I read the LAX code and what we were basing our information on, I thought, well, wow, that's, it's such a broad code. It seems like it would be very functional, and why aren't we following that? But I appreciate breaking our proposed ordinance down to being more specific, and I think, according to our city attorney, that is putting us in a better position legally down the road, in their opinion. So I support the ordinances presented, and the fact that our Airport Director and the Police Chief feel that this is a tool that's, that's going to allow them to better, better do the work in the city is, I fully support.
Thank you. Any other comments from Council? Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to staff and our Police Chief for bringing this forward, and all your work on this. Very much appreciate it. In talking to the City Attorney, and your report just now stated that the city has an administrative policy before any enforcement action occurs. Palm Springs PD, or, you know, whoever responds on behalf of the city typically provides certain information about housing and services. The Chief indicated our access center, which is available to folks who are unhoused. So is that on the books now? So if we approve this trespassing ordinance applying to the airport, the police will continue to use that administrative policy to offer housing referrals and information about services to folks before they're enforcing the ordinance?
From the police perspective, we will follow that policy each and every time we contact a homeless individual. We want to make sure that we're referring them to the resources of which they can avail themselves if they so choose. And we have pamphlets made up that we hand out regularly, but we want to make sure it's done, especially every time there's going to be any enforcement action taken.
Thank you, Chief. Really appreciate that. And then I just have a question about the list of activities. So I just wanted to ask staff if the airport purposes are enough. So like renting a car isn't included? Do we need to include that? Some people might go to the airport just to rent a car in that airport area where the car rental stations are. Like, are there other uses that we need to specify, or do you think this is comprehensive enough to include those?
Thank you for that question. I think there are potentially other uses that we should specify. However, what we've included in there is generally, those are generally the day-to-day activities that we see in. That covers about 80% of what we do at the airport.
Got it. And it says other, among other similar customer service uses, so I think that would be fine. Renting a car is probably another customer service use. Getting a TNC or a ride-share, right? Those might be customer service uses. So I think that the definition too is probably fine, though you might want to review and think through if there are other uses we should specify later. And then I just have a question about migrants. So I know that we've So I know that we've received a number of migrants over the years through the migrant crisis, through the county, through people traveling. Sometimes people essentially have no place else to go because they're a migrant and don't have travel plans yet or something like that. So is this policy, do you think that they'll fit in? They'll be allowed because they, obviously, they'll be allowed and our city will welcome them and help them get to wherever they're going, which is what we've been doing for the last few years that migrants have been going through our airport. But do you think that will be under this policy because they have a ticket? Or because they're traveling through the airport? Could you just make sure that migrants would be safe under this policy?
We can certainly do that, Councilmember Holstich. And most of the asylum seekers that we encounter, they do have a ticket and they are able to present that ticket to us. So that should be covered under this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm trying to remember back the last few cycles that we've had asylum seekers or other migrants. And I think sometimes they had tickets and sometimes they did not. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments at this time or is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we pass the introduction ordinance to the City Council of Palm Springs, amending Chapter 16.01, the municipal code relating to trespass on residential and public property.
Thank you.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember DeHart and a second from Mayor Protem Bernstein. And just quickly to say, thank you for bringing forward this ordinance and doing so in a kind way to help us move forward in this process and help our unhoused and not just criminalize their actions. It's obvious that we need more support and housing, which is part of why we're building the navigation center and why we added some overnight beds at the access center. We need to add more. I know that work is ongoing by the county and the city and other workers. And in terms of the migrants, there are several different organizations that are working on this issue, including Lift to Rise, there's several Catholic churches, the Galilee Center, the list goes on and on. So we can work with the airport staff and those nonprofits to make sure we have plans in place to ensure that even those without tickets are provided some temporary space before their flights. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember DeHart.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 3D, a discussion on disposition of Desert Highland Gateway Estates' single-family residential lots. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. Good evening. Can we bring up the presentation for 3D, please? Oh, there it is. Madam Mayor, we'd like to have the City Council provide input on the types of proposals to pursue for the future use of these three single-family residential parcels. The lots range in size from 7,400 square feet to 9,100 square feet and 9,500 square feet. And as you can see on the map, are located in the Desert Highland Gateways Estates neighborhood. Here's an aerial view of the Tramview and El Dorado parcels. These two parcels are owned by the housing successor agency. And the last appraisal we had for these in 2017 was $35,000 each, when we put them out just for sale at that time. And before ordering a new appraisal, we would like to know what the potential uses would be, as that may aid in the appraisal process. This is a city-owned property on Rosa Parks, and it's estimated to have the same value as the other two successor agency parcels. So with these single-family lots and the approval of Senate Bill 9, there's an opportunity to do lot splits, which allow for two-unit developments and then an additional opportunity to add duplexes on each of the resulting lots, creating the opportunity to create 12 new units. And each of these half lots may have two dwellings, which would be the duplex, or some other form of property. And as we look at the potential here for use of these properties, we've also discussed in the past the possibility of doing demonstration projects on these properties to show the benefits of photovoltaics, solar water heating, and battery storage to be added to residential units. So this could be a component requested by the council to be incorporated into the request for proposals. There's also the issue of how much it costs to build housing nowadays. So another possible demonstration project could have to do with new construction technologies and materials, such as using recycled materials, 3D-printed concrete homes, and compressed fiber cement sheets. So there's a lot of opportunities and potential uses for these properties. But we would like to zero in on what the council would like to prioritize and provide some direction to staff on which of these may be most interesting and intriguing to them. So on this slide, you can see the Senate Bill 9 opportunity, just something to consider. Doing a program such as a sweat equity or self-help type of project where individuals who may buy the properties assist with the construction of the properties. That does take a little training and some professional project management oversight. There could be apprenticeship programs where people looking to learn a trade get involved with the construction of the properties. And as I mentioned earlier, net positive homes for energy-saving, cost-efficient construction technologies. And there's also the possibility of supplementing homeownership with down payment assistance programs to go along with the development of new homes on these properties. And you may include other criteria, as you wish. But for now, that concludes the presentation. And if there's any particular approaches or direction the council would like to provide, we're happy to consider it and listen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that staff report. I'm going to start us off on this one. This is, these lots are located in District 1, and this has been something that I've been talking about for quite some time. It's three city-owned, well, mostly city-owned lots, right? City.
Successor agency.
They're successor agency. They're ours. And that's a big deal, and especially with SB 9 allowing us to divide the lots further and have the opportunity to really make a huge impact, not just in this neighborhood, but for the entire city. And when I've talked to community members about what they'd like to see in this neighborhood, over and over again, it goes back to the sweat equity. The opportunity to create, to own and create generational wealth. There are many members of the Desert Highlands Gateway Estates' community who are renting. There were folks who took advantage of, you know, very low prices in that neighborhood quite some time ago, who own many of the properties. And therefore, they've been rentals. And there's folks who've lived there for generations who do not own a home. So it's an opportunity to, hopefully, and that's going to be a question for staff, to hopefully to be able to give some priority preference to people who are living in that neighborhood. And then, of course, that would open up rental spaces once they were to move. But that's one of my first questions for you, Jay, is what is our ability as a city to provide priority preference? Because I know that there are laws that may prevent us from making a list, so to speak, and saying, you're next.
Yes, Mayor. In conversations with the city attorney, it's my understanding that this can be done, as long as it does not become a pattern for the city to prioritize certain groups for projects that the city engages in.
Thank you. I think the intent here was simply that we're adding homes in a neighborhood where there's many folks who are looking to purchase and would not otherwise have that opportunity and wanting to help Palm Springs residents. I know that this is a question that comes along, even with our other affordable housing developments, where you cannot to say only Palm Springs residents can go into those properties. So that's why there was the question of if it is possible. I know it is tricky. Are there other questions from council members before we kind of go into a larger discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jay, could you just explain the context or the background for some of this? So you're requesting that the City Council give you direction on issuance for a request for proposal for the three single-family lots. So you're going to see which council is interested in, or if there are a few council are interested in, then you're going to craft their request for proposals from there. Is that right? Could you just give us a little more narrowing of that? So do you want us to pick one of these options? Are there programs where it could be various or multiple? Have you had any conversations with affordable developers, affordable housing or other housing developers? So you know what might be possible? Could you just speak a little bit more from what direction, about what direction council should give you right now?
Yes, absolutely, Councilmember. You know, in the past, staff had actually been directed to just sell the properties and have the funds returned to the successor agency housing funds. At that time, there were no buyers. And so the property was not sold and different concepts were evaluated. So all these ideas had come up about demonstration projects and what could be done. And we were never able to really narrow down the focus at that time on how to draft the RFP to get these properties out into the world and make better use of them. So with the upswing in the real estate market, not surprisingly, the phone rang a few times. And it was some of our nonprofit developers who indicated that they would be interested in purchasing the properties or arranging to have a program conducted on these properties. And, which is kind of prompting the suggestion for the request for proposals. And as it, there was interest by a handful of nonprofits. So it seems like it does have to be a competitive process. And so through this, if there's a desire to create that asset-building opportunity, that would be great, but there's trade-offs if we also believe that, well, you know, we really should look into taking advantage of all the net-zero possibilities. That would probably increase the cost of construction and frankly, end up being a request for additional subsidy from the city. But if that's a goal the council would like to see, that could potentially be built in. And there are benefits, such as lower energy bills. So that's something to think about. It could be, let's issue the RFP and developers, give us your best shot. If you can address all these at a fair price, that would really be great.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for all of your work on this. I know the staff report states in 2017, we met with affordable housing developers to discuss an infill or a self-help program. And we were told at the time that the federal law had changed about where Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, for example, who had done prior projects in this area, how they found that funding and it was no longer available to them. And so we have been working on this, you specifically, Jay, longer than since 2017, but me since 2017, on bringing this project forward. So really grateful for your perseverance here. I have another question, if you know off the top of your head, or maybe you can pull it now or later. But are there more vacant lots in that area or in the neighborhood to purchase and add to a program? I know initially, when we talked to Coachella Valley Housing Coalition in 2017, it might have been 2019. I know Councilmember Middleton and I were on the Affordable Housing Committee, and I think we had some of those conversations. And they said they needed scale, so they needed that it was more efficient to do multiple, multiple housing units as opposed to just two or three. I think they told us at that time they couldn't do just three. So has that changed because of the lot split opportunity? And are there opportunities for us to use our housing funds to purchase more parcels that we could add into a program that usually wants to do? I was on the board of Coachella Valley Housing Coalition for a little bit before I was elected. I think they do, you know, much, much larger-scale self-help programs when they're able.
Yes, in terms of additional properties in the area, there are other properties and lots that are vacant. There were a number of properties put up for sale over the summer. We tried to respond and acquire some of them. Unfortunately, they moved very, very fast and were purchased. And those are, some of those were single-family lots. Some of those were more mixed commercial and residential lots, almost fronting on Indian Canyon. So yes, in that regard, and, you know, we do keep our eyes open for other opportunities as they come up. So programmatically, we could also think about using our available funds to continue a program like this as it moves forward. This particular opportunity has to do with properties we already own. So it's disposing of them and kind of shaping how they can be used in the future. If we were to go out and purchase properties as the city, we may also have to deal with the new law of Surplus Land Act, which makes it a little more difficult to dispose of the properties. However, for affordable housing purposes, I believe we could declare properties as exempt surplus and then move forward with projects and plans to have them developed as affordable housing. But that would, you know, eliminate the option, in this case, of just selling the properties for market rate. In regards to the scale and being able to, needing to have more units to construct, yes, the SB 9 opportunity does help with that. It could potentially create more units. But also, one of the nonprofits told me they've kind of tweaked their model where the sweat equity is not necessarily accrued or built or earned, building the house. It can be through other service. And they are able to just bring on contractors to construct the homes. And then the individuals would contribute their sweat equity by working in other capacities, doing service. So it has changed a little bit since we last spoke with one of those developers. And so there seem to be more opportunities to pursue at this point.
Thank you. Can I ask just one more question? And you're choosing an RFP process, request for proposals that's specific, instead of like a request for ideas or another like more open-ended process that would allow the developers and the community to give more input in it or allow in the community to give more input in it or allow council to pick from a broader array of like real ideas versus these topics in a vacuum?
It, it, that, that is a possibility, Councilmember, to pursue even more ideas. We thought we did grab quite a few. And of course, any developer could propose, you know, more than what's being requested. And that may open additional thought and as a bonus point, say, in, in the RFP process.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, you just want us to ask questions and not share our opinion yet? Is that right?
You can go ahead and share your thoughts as well.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'd love to see us do a homeownership option. That's what we've been hearing from the community. I'm very interested to hear what my fellow council members and colleagues think as well. But Dieter Crawford gave me a tour in 2017 when I was first elected and showed me these lots and asked me to do something about them. I'm so glad the council's considering them now. And I really think the community should have an input in what this program looks like and what works for them. I don't live in that neighborhood, so I'm not a good person to decide. But I've heard again and again, homeownership with sweat equity or mortgage assistance and the need to have multiple units as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments and questions? Let's go to Mayor Protam with some questions.
Okay, thanks, Jay. I mean, this was actually really interesting, seeing all these other types of building options I didn't even think of. So just a question, if we just sold the lots at Fair Market now, do you have any idea what they would sell for?
The 2017 appraisal was $35,000. I think maybe 45,000 to 50,000.
That's it? Okay, okay. On page five, you say lots in single-family residential zones may not be split to create two primary. I thought these can be split to be, create two primary.
I can double-check that. I believe the requirement might have been a primary and an ADU type of unit, but I can double-check.
But if we did the maximum on each of these lots, we could, we could have two primary and two ADUs. I think that's what it says later, that you'd have a total of four, two primary and two ADUs on each, on each of these lots?
I see. And page five, you're saying is?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if the context is of that. Middle of the page, Mayor Protam, is that?
I'm looking, the first line, you say lots in single-family residential zones may not be split to create two primary units, but then each half of the lot can combine an accessory dwelling unit with a primary unit.
Jay, he's looking at your presentation.
I'm looking at your presentation, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, okay. Let me double-check that, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think the staff report is actually correct. And I'll ask Flynn if he's got any sense of that.
Certainly. Under SB nine, you can split a residential lot. On those resulting lots, you can have one primary unit and an accessory dwelling unit on the lot. So essentially, two units on each of the resulting lots.
Okay. So on the three, on the three lots we have, we're going to have six primary units and six ADUs for the three lots.
Potentially, yes, we could.
And the ADUs have, they can't be sold or anything separately, they're, they're owned by the primary.
No, they cannot.
And if we created, could we create 12 rental units that were each separate or not?
I'd have to take a closer look at our SB nine regulations to see if we can do that. There's some language about the property owner remaining on site, and so we have to be careful with that. I, I don't think we could rent all 12 of them as rental units. So there has to be some type of ownership on each of the sites.
Okay. And what, do we have any idea what the maximum size of the primary houses could be on each of these lots if we split them?
Yes, under our SB nine ordinance, the primary unit can be up to 1,500 square feet and the secondary unit or ADU could be up to 1,000 square feet.
Okay, okay. And when we're talking about a, getting a developer in, how do we, and they get either sweat equity or, or, or do mortgage assistance, how do we ensure that the people stay in the homes? And is there programs to help them? Is it, is it, is there programs, first of all, to help them to learn how to apply or how to get a mortgage or go through the process? If they're first-time homeowners, it's not an easy process.
Right. That's something the nonprofit very typically helps out with, providing homeownership classes and helping the individuals go through the process of completing their documentation. In fact, some have relationships with banks that can help reduce interest rates so they can, purchasing the property is easier for the low-income family. So process-wise, there's, there's a lot of assistance. It's a program.
Okay.
Where the developer assists. Now, what the city typically does is record covenants on the property that require individuals comply with that, have a certain income qualification and remain in the property for a certain amount of time. And by having covenants on the property, if there was an attempt to sell the property, you know, we'd be notified, we would know, we'd be in the chain of titles. So we would control and know when those events happen.
Okay. So as part of the RFP, we could look for a developer that has good programs to help people? Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize, I'm having some internet issues, so have to go off video from sometime. I, I support the comments I've heard previously. I think our priority on this should be to prioritize local residents who are long-term residents of the Desert Island Gateway neighborhood to be the owners of these homes. And homeownership should be a priority. And time should be a priority. There are many different avenues that we could go down, but if they're going to take us and detour us months and years beyond another approach that would get homes to local residents at an earlier period of time, I favor moving more quickly. All of the sweat equity programs and the like are things we should take advantage of. The more homes we can get built and owned by local residents, the better. But they need to be homes that people want to live in and that they will want to stay in. And let's be careful not to get too crowded with the homes and have something that is not a place that people want to raise their families in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeHart.
Looking at family or the, the size, square footage that can be built, you know, I'm a little concerned on having two units on the lot if we are talking about having growing families in a 1,500-square-foot house when this lot can really accommodate a larger home. 100% behind the homeownership opportunity. And if there was a way to give priority to desert highland residents, I certainly am in favor of that. But community land trust isn't one of the options, Jay. Is, are we not allowed to use these funds for that type of program? Or would a community land trust be somebody who would be responding to the RFP to work with the city?
My understanding is a community land trust might be an entity that owns the property and that purchases properties for the possibility of producing affordable housing, affordable units. And this is, and then through that, the community land trust, possibly an entity of the city, could do ground leases for the development of homes on those properties. And the advantage of that is through the ground lease, you control the terms a little better. And you could provide ownership of the building to the individual, but the community land trust would retain ownership of the land.
But the homeowner, homeowner can still sell over time and, and there's, there's guidelines and restrictions on, you know, what, what profit they're, they're able to take a certain profit there based off of the, the time. And there's a, there's a calculation for that, isn't there?
Yes, there's a calculation for it. And again, my understanding is the, as property is valued in terms of land value and improvement value, the owner would be able to sell the improvement, improvement value side, the building. And the community land trust would retain the land as ownership.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments that we've heard so far. I do think that it is important that we move forward on this as quickly as we can. As Councilmember Holstich said as well, this is something that was first discussed in 2017, and I'm sure it was discussed prior to that, but that's just in our collective memory as a council. And definitely was the, one of the first things that I heard from the community when, when I first campaigned in 2019. The other thing too, just in terms of the size, 1,500 square feet is about the size of most of the homes in the neighborhood. So it is consistent with, with what we, what we see. It's about 1,300 to 1,500 square feet. Some of the homes on East Gate, which were built at the time of the Mountain Gate development, are a bit larger. But even those are, are on the smaller side of what you see in the Mountain Gate development. So just to put that out there for folks. I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing so far is that we want homeownership opportunities for folks in the neighborhood, that we would like density, but with keeping in mind that we want people to feel comfortable and, and, and happy in their home and not too smushed. And that we do want to hear from the, from the community, but not to the point of delaying the, delaying this, this work. Jay, is there additional information that would be helpful for us to, to provide to you at this point? Yeah, let's go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I want to say, when we, I, I agree with, I agree with everything Mayor said. I just, with the homeownership, I would prefer that it's first-time homeowners would be ideal. If it was people who are in the neighborhood who had previously rented or now have an opportunity to buy, I think that would be the ideal scenario for me. And whether it's through sweat, sweat equity or, or, or assistance, either way is good with me.
Thank you. And, and I think that's, that's correct. We are looking to assist with first-time homebuyers. And I think that is what I've, what I've heard in the neighborhood as well. So Jay, is there, are there additional, more specific comments that you'd like to hear from this? I know that that's fairly broad, where I, I think you see here, council is willing to, to discuss more if you'd like.
No, that is very helpful. It's clear direction, homeownership, some density, and hearing from the community is all doable and very helpful. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic. Do we, oh, looks like Councilmember Holstich has a comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to raise up, asking if there, if we can do this at a larger scale. The community's been asking this, for this for decades. I saw the big project that was in the 1990s. Shockingly, it's been 30 years since the 1990s. And I, I would love to see us do a larger footprint than just three lots, especially if there are lots to purchase or other parcels of land that the city could purchase and then bundle together to do a larger project, which is what Coachella Valley Housing Coalition recommended that we do in 2017 and 2018 when we first discussed this. So Jay, I know I asked you on the spot if there are parcels available. You sort of answered that perhaps there are and you've been looking to that, but is that something that we would be able to, to do now to make this a larger project? Or would we do that in a phase? What's your recommendation?
It's, it's slightly different, Councilmember, but if the council wishes, this, this is something that's, you know, not uncommon. And if, if the direction is to seek out and purchase lots that are not improved, we can definitely do that. If it's to seek out homes that are for sale, we can do that. And if it's to provide down payment assistance, so individuals could also on their own find homes, townhomes or condominiums to purchase as a first-time homebuyer program, we can also do that. So we're happy to bring back details of a program like that and have you consider it. Or if you want to, you know, have any further discussion, we're, we're happy to do that also.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. I think it's up to council. I'm interested in what council thinks. You know, I, what, we've been talking about for a while with different councils, has been doing a self-help homeownership program, whatever that looks like in terms of mortgage assistance or sweat equity, et cetera. But doing it and being able to purchase a number of lots in that community so we can do it at a larger scale than three parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart, did you have some, have something?
Yeah, I, I like the idea, Christie, or Councilmember Holstich, of, of seeking additional properties, but I would hate to hold up the progress on these three lots to move forward immediately, to at least get these going. And at parallel, you know, staff can be looking at additional lots that we can, we can consider to bring into, you know, the mix here. But I, I would hate to add anything into the mix that would slow down movement on, on these three lots that we're talking about here today.
Thank you, Councilmember DeHart. And I, I agree with my fellow council members that I'd love to see something come back about what the process would be for buying vacant lots and even purchasing homes that maybe are unoccupied and in the same situation that we heard about this morning with, or this morning, it feels, feels like we've been here longer than we have earlier in this meeting, derelict properties, things like that. And again, with the opportunity to do the same thing that we're discussing now, which is homeownership opportunities for, for people in this neighborhood. The other thing that I've learned is that there are several families in the neighborhood who own some of these lots. And, and I can list off at least five just off of the top of my head. And there's been just difficulties in being able to build on them, but they are the owners. So I would love to also hear about what we can do to assist those families in building on their lots. In some cases, there, the lots are right next door to where they currently live. So how, how do we help to, to really build out this community, which we know will improve property values for everybody in the neighborhood, will provide housing, will reduce crime? I mean, there's so many benefits and this is one of our only neighborhoods that has this significant number of lots still available in the entire city of Palm Springs. Anything else from council? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you, Jay. Really appreciate all of the effort that you put into this. And thank you, council, for supporting this. I really appreciate it. See, the next item on the agenda is item 3E, Proposed Update of Palm Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 5.77 pertaining to Adult Oriented Businesses, and Update to Chapter 11.10 pertaining to Public Nudity. I am amazed that it's only eight o'clock. Can we have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor and members of council. You had indicated at the beginning of the meeting that we might have a somewhat truncated discussion of this. I do have a rather lengthy presentation. I just want to get the impression from the council, if you want me to go ahead and go through that.
Yes, if you can go ahead and do your presentation, since it's only eight, I think we're, we're good on time.
Okay. Not that I'm trying to get out of this discussion, but just want to make sure that we do with the pleasure of the council. So in terms of the adult business ordinance, as you'll recall, we we discussed an initial draft of this back in November. Because we have two new city council members here with us, I, I just want to provide some of the direction that was given at that meeting, understanding that with two new council members, there might be some additional input and direction that we would receive. Just going quickly through the list of things that we discussed at the last meeting. One of the items discussed was relative to consolidating the licensing process. Currently, we require a permit and a license. The idea was to consolidate those two together. We were also directed to look at revising the definitions for specified anatomical parts and specified sexual activities. Give the city council options in looking at those revisions. We were also advised to look at the residential separation distance requirements. And one of the things that we had proposed was using the term adjacent. And I'll get into further discussion about that later on in the presentation. And then finally, we looked at expanding zone districts where adult uses could be located. And one of the things that was decided upon or direction was given was relative to allowing it in the C2 or general commercial zone district. Let me give a little bit of background on our adult business ordinance. The ordinance itself was last amended in 1995. And with the advent of the internet, adult businesses have changed substantially. And so the adult ordinance is out of date. And it is important that we keep our municipal code up to date. As industries change, it's important that our regulations change with that. One of the things that's unique perhaps about adult businesses is they are permitted by right. They don't require any type of a discretionary review by the planning commissioner, city council. And this is a standard practice that we see pretty much across the country. And so the districts where adult businesses are currently allowed are the city's industrial districts. And as I had mentioned, they are allowed by right and don't require any special approvals other than basic standards that we have in our ordinance. One of the things that's a little confusing is there are certain types of operations that are exempt from our adult business ordinance. Here in Palm Springs, we have a number of clothing optional hotels. Those are not considered to be adult businesses and are not covered by this ordinance. In a similar manner, retail businesses where the amount of products, adult products sold constitutes less than 10% of their square footage or selling space is not defined as an adult business. And so it's exempt. And so those are two categories of businesses that are not subject to the adult business ordinance. And sometimes that becomes a little bit confusing. In terms of updating the ordinance, one of the things that we are proposing to do is to streamline and condense the use categories. As I had mentioned, the business has changed substantially. And so there are things that we really don't see anymore, such as adult theaters, for example. With that, we're proposing four separate categories. Number one is an adult entertainment establishment. And so that would be something like a strip club. There's also the adult hotel and motel. We're not proposing any change to that. However, I have had a couple of comments from council members and in discussions with the city attorney that we might eliminate that category, since we don't have any currently that qualify under the definition of that, and combine that with our adult sex venue. The other category that we're proposing is an adult retail establishment. Formerly, this would have been an adult bookstore or an adult motion picture arcade. And so again, consolidating those uses into four categories and potentially eliminating the adult hotel and consolidating that into the adult sex venue. In terms of definitions, definitions are used to determine if a business really qualifies as an adult business based on the materials that are sold or the activities that occur on the site. And so what we've done is we've revised the definitions for specified anatomical parts and specified sexual activities. And then we've also given in the backup materials, examples from other cities that you can use to compare. So if you feel that more changes are necessary, we've given you some study materials to look at if you'd like to give us direction in terms of any future modifications to those definitions. Another area where we're looking at potential changes is relative to separation distance. In terms of separation distance from protected uses, which would be things such as parks, schools, youth centers, et cetera, we're proposing to increase that from 500 feet to 600 feet. The basis for that change is to make it consistent with other separation distances. For example, in our cannabis ordinance, cannabis businesses have to be a minimum of 600 feet from protected uses. And so we're looking to do that in order to maintain consistency from our protected uses. As I had mentioned, one of the things that we're looking to change is relative to the separation from residential uses. Currently, that requirement is 650 feet. What we're proposing is that it not be adjacent to residential zone districts. In terms of the definition of adjacent, that means directly abutting a residential zone district or across the street from a residential zone district. And so that's one of the ways that we still continue to protect residential areas from adult businesses is by using this definition of adjacent. We also have a separation distance from other, other adult uses, excuse me. No adult business can be adjacent to another adult business. So what that helps to do is prevent saturation in certain areas of adult businesses. In terms of zone districts, as I've mentioned, adult businesses are only currently allowed in industrial districts. We did look at expanding that to both the C2 and the highway commercial zones. But based on the discussion at city council, we've eliminated the highway commercial zone and are only looking at increasing that to the C2 commercial zone. One of the things to remember as we look at the locations of adult businesses is that there are still regulations that would prohibit adult businesses from being on either major or secondary thoroughfares. And then we also have the separation from residential and protected uses. And so this is another thing that helps to perhaps limit or locate adult businesses in appropriate areas. Let me go into a little bit more discussion about locations on secondary and major thoroughfares. In the general plan, we define our street system. And major thoroughfares are typically defined as our major six lane roadways. Secondary thoroughfares are typically defined as our four lane roadways. So on this map, you see a variety of colors. Typically, or generally, anything on this map, any street that's shown on this map, adult businesses would not be allowed on those streets with the color designation. So for example, Palm Canyon Drive, Indian Canyon Drive, Vista Chino, Ramon, adult businesses would not be allowed on those streets. So that's one of the criteria that we use in determining where adult businesses can go. We're not proposing any change to this requirement currently. Getting more specific into the C2 zone, if city council chooses to expand to C2 zone properties, I've got a couple of maps that I'd like to show you, which identify the areas where C2 zone properties are located. The first is in the vicinity of Sunny Dunes Road and South Palm Canyon Drive. And I'm showing here in the image in red, properties that are zone C2. Again, taking into consideration that adult businesses are not allowed on major thoroughfares, the C2 zone properties that are directly on South Palm Canyon Drive would not be allowed to have adult businesses. It's only when you're further back from South Palm Canyon that those businesses could occur. In addition, we also have to be mindful of separation from residential areas. So let's see, back here off of Bolardo, we have parcels that are zoned residential. So we couldn't have adult businesses directly adjacent to those parcels either. What that leaves is about two or three parcels on Sunny Dunes that would be eligible for adult businesses. And currently, those parcels are undeveloped. There isn't any buildings on them at this point. And so in the area of Sunny Dunes and South Palm Canyon, again, we would net about two to three parcels where adult businesses could be located. There's an additional area where we have C2 zone parcels. And that's in the vicinity of East Palm Canyon and Cherokee Way. That's where the Mercedes Benz dealership, the Porsche dealership and the other car dealerships are located. It's also where we have the Backstreet Arts District. In looking at those parcels, because of adjacency to East Palm Canyon, which is a major thoroughfare, and then also looking at adjacency to residential areas, that we have an apartment complex back here on Matthew and Linden, as well as the mobile home parks that sit back here. Due to those two factors, no adult businesses would be allowed on these parcels as they're currently situated. So that essentially eliminates this area from consideration for adult businesses. So if city council were to expand adult uses to the C2 zone properties, again, our net result would be about two to three parcels that qualify. So it doesn't get you a whole lot in terms of expanding, but it does give you some additional properties for consideration. Before I leave these slides, let me just go back to the discussion of adjacent. In particular, looking at the industrial properties on Sunny Dunes and Industrial Place. Using the restriction of not being adjacent to parcels that are on Caye Palo Fiero would not be allowed to have adult businesses because there is residential immediately across the street. However, here on Industrial Place and going further up on Sunny Dunes, those parcels that are not immediately adjacent to residential would be allowed to have adult businesses. One of the unique things about this area is we do have Talkwoods Creek. That is not a public right of way. It is a separate parcel of land that exists. And so that would not prohibit adult businesses from being located on the south side of Industrial Place, even though there is residential across Talkwoods Creek to the south. And so I just wanted to point that out and make that clear because there had been questions from members of the public in terms of being able to locate businesses in that area. Moving on, just going into a little bit more detail about the licensing process. As I had mentioned, we currently require both a business license and adult oriented business permit. The direction was to consolidate those into a single license and approval process. I've met with our finance department and our planning department to discuss how that might work. And we believe that we can go ahead and move forward with consolidating that process while still giving adequate review of adult businesses as business owners come forward to look at obtaining a license. One of the things that we want to do, however, is to retain the fees that we collect for both of those, the permit and the license. There is approximately a $2,700 fee for the business permit. And that's to do the review that's necessary on the part of planning in evaluating the parcel. And then also looking at the additional review that we're doing with the police department for certain adult oriented businesses in developing a security plan. And so what we intend to do is when we get to adopting the budget and a new fee schedule in July, we'll consolidate those fees together as part of that process. In the interim, we'll go ahead and continue to collect both of the fees for the license and the permit. There's a number of other general changes that we're proposing to make to the adult business ordinance. One of those I had discussed earlier, and that's the retail threshold for exemption from being considered an adult business. I had considered bumping that up from 10% of their selling space to 20% of their selling space. The basis for that was looking at businesses that we have in commercial areas, for example, on Arenas, where the amount of adult products may push the limit of 10%. And so in order to accommodate those businesses, I'd recommend that we increase that to 20%. One of the things that has been mentioned by a couple of council members is we have, in addition to the percentage limitation, we also have a square footage limitation. What I would suggest is we could just keep that at the percentage limitation. I think that would be adequate in looking at how that might be applicable. Another thing that we are proposing to require is a security plan that's approved by our police department for adult sex venues and adult entertainment establishments, much like we already require for nightclubs. We think that would be appropriate, both for the police department to review those establishments and also for the safety of the patrons of those establishments. We are considering modifying the operating hour limitations to match that of alcohol venues. And so that they would be closed from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, similar to nightclubs, et cetera. There's rather lengthy discussions about interior configuration requirements. We are proposing to eliminate those and rather evaluate those on a case by case basis as part of the security plan that we review for those businesses. And then there's other requirements that are already addressed by the zoning code. For example, parking requirements and outdoor lighting requirements. I'm proposing to eliminate those and just refer to the zoning code requirements. So as we update those in the zoning code, they would also be applicable to adult businesses. One of the other considerations that we had discussed back in November, and I just want to bring forward again, is there is concern about events that are held at our hotels and more particularly, our clothing optional hotels. One of the considerations there is that by inviting non-hotel guests to the property, we have concerns about parking, also holding special events at hotel properties because many of them are located in residential neighborhoods, concerns about noise and impacts to adjacent residential properties. What I would propose to you is that I think we need to look at a separate permitting process for special events at our hotel properties, as well as the issuance of day passes and provide a separate regulatory program for those things. And so I don't really want to go into details tonight about that relative to the adult business ordinance, but rather feel there's another way to address that. Another thing to take into consideration is that hotels in residential zones and commercial zones cannot have adult uses as they are in the inappropriate zone to do so. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear as well. With that, let me transition from the adult business ordinance to the public nudity ordinance. We did present an option or a number of options to you at your November city council meeting, including repealing the entire ordinance and deferring to state law. We also discussed modifying the city ordinance or leaving the ordinance as is. Based on the council discussion, it was determined to modify our existing ordinance. And so what we've done is presented a draft to you this evening based on the comments that we heard back in November. In terms of the definition of nudity itself, we've looked at a simplified definition based on the definition that the city of San Francisco has adopted. And we've looked at a definition that does not discriminate between genders based on the input of city council and the direction we received. One of the other things that we had questions about is what constitutes a public place? And where is the public nudity ordinance applicable? There were concerns that public nudity on private property, for example, your own private residence, would be subject to the public nudity ordinance. And so we wanted to clarify and make sure that private property is exempt from that. What we found was actually, there's a very good definition in Indian Wells that uses the term where there is the expectation of privacy. So relative to private property, where there's the expectation of privacy, the public nudity ordinance is not applicable in those situations. And then similar to other cities, we've maintained language relative to the fact that it's not applicable to children under the age of six or live theatrical performances. it's not applicable to children under the age of six or live theatrical performances. We've also provided examples from other cities in terms of their ordinances. I had a question about what is the appropriate age that this is applicable to. Some cities have the age of 10, others have the age of six. Again, it's based on the community and what the preference of City Council is relative to whether or not this is applicable to children. One of the things, I'll confess, I don't think that we got a consensus on from our City Council discussion in November, was whether or not the public nudity ordinance should exempt city-permitted events such as parades. And so we've given you some language to consider, but we would like input from City Council if you would like us to exempt city permitted special events and parades. So with that, that concludes my presentation to you. Again, a little lengthy this evening, but happy to get your input and your direction in terms of where you would like to go with these draft ordinances this evening.
Thank you so much, Flynn. That's really helpful and comprehensive. I know we do have two new council members here. So I want to just defer a bit to Councilmember DeHart and Mayor Protam Bernstein. Do either of you have questions that you want to kick us off with, since you were not part of the earlier discussion? Okay, looks like Mayor Protam does. Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I appreciate City Council and staff having done most of a lot of the work last time. I realize it was somewhat uncomfortable for some people, and obviously very detailed and lengthy, so I appreciate that. And I've actually had a lot of experience with adult businesses in my former life and FCC rules and things like that. So a couple of questions. When we do the business permit for adult-oriented businesses, how detailed information can we get? Like, you know?
City Council can detail in the ordinance itself what you're expecting to see on those types of applications or what you want staff to review. Typically, for an adult-oriented business, we would require some type of a floor plan. We would obviously require some type of discussion of what activities or what materials they're going to be selling. You know, getting into adult sex venues or adult entertainment. We want to look specifically at the layout in terms of security, and so we want to look at interior configurations of those as well. But essentially, City Council can determine what you want to evaluate as part of that application process. So if there's additional things you want us to look at, please let us know.
And we could ask for things, you know, like contact information of owners and all that.
Absolutely, and we would do that anyway.
Okay. For the parking, you talked about the special events, but other than that, any adult business would have to have their own, enough parking for their own patrons?
Correct. They would need to provide their parking onsite, based on the square footage or number of seats of the business.
Okay. So in Sunny Dunes, where that industrial district is separated from the wash, I mean, you know, there are some of the buildings, I guess they can build a wall so that they're basically, their business is completely not visible from, or the patrons of their business or activities are not visible. Is that the case in all the industrial districts where you might have a sex venue? Is there places where a resident, even if they're not adjacent, could still view what's going on?
Just looking generally at the configuration of our industrial districts, my answer would be no, for the most part, because, again, we prohibit them from being on major thoroughfares. And so most of the heavily-traveled streets would not have adult businesses on them. And then also looking at the fact that they cannot be adjacent to a residential area, meaning they can't be across the street from a residential area. That tends to force the adult businesses to more interior locations, which helps to address the concern of having to see or seeing these businesses from residential areas.
Okay, okay, thank you. And can we legally require a sex venue to work with public health providers and public health department before they open and on a regular basis?
I'm going to defer to the City Attorney. He seems to be shaking his head yes.
I think we could. I think, as opposed to other adult businesses such as bookstores and live entertainment and theaters, which are much more protected by the First Amendment, I think that an adult sex venue, as drafted and as proposed, the city has a lot more flexibility and authority, and there are certainly other health implications. And so I think, I think that would be unlawful.
I mean, we saw this last year with Monkeypox, that it would have been helpful to have their, making sure they worked with us. So we haven't legally allowed sex venues in the past, even though they may actually exist, or they may exist in some form in clothing optional. Is that right? We haven't?
Yes, there have been instances where we have had to do code compliance on such businesses.
But we haven't legally allowed a sex venue in the city?
No, we have not.
Okay. And in terms of the public nudity, we made it gender neutral, so we took out the requirement for covering any part of the female breast, or is there any other city that you know besides San Francisco that does that?
Not that I'm aware of. In doing the research from other cities, looking at the Coachella Valley, and then also looking at some of the larger cities here in the state, I wasn't really able to find that.
Okay. And a question came up in public comment last time about if a gym wants to do naked yoga, that's not adult business, it's not visible from the public, is that fine to do?
I believe, based on the definitions and the regulations that we're proposing, that that would be permissible.
For the public nudity, when we determine what is considered nudity and what's not, so right now it's basically just genitalia, anus, and perineum, can you be any public place, as long as that's covered? Can you, I mean, a park or a community center?
What we have the ability to do is, we still have the ability to determine what is acceptable at our parks and our community centers. So for example, the swim center has policies in terms of what is permissible in terms of swimwear. That can still occur, and so we still have the ability to establish policy relative to public facilities in terms of the public nudity ordinance.
But in terms of other areas, I mean, let's say a restaurant wanted to have their host or hostesses all be topless on the Palm Canyon, is there anything that would prevent that?
One of the things that comes up is, in our definition of an adult business, by doing so, they would then be qualified or classified as an adult-oriented business.
But it's not public nudity, right?
It's on private property, and so on private property, it's subject to the adult business ordinance.
So the question then really is where we could limit, like, parks and, but walking down the street, you can't limit public. If they're covered appropriately according to our ordinance, you can't limit that.
We do have some additional language in the enforcement section relative to the ability of the police to make determinations, but generally, you are correct, that we can't limit that in public areas, based on the language of the ordinance.
Okay. So if we wanted to limit, if we wanted to have dress requirements for what you could be in chambers, we could do that?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And bars and restaurants, ABC has their own rules about what people can do in there?
Yes, they do.
Those are my questions. I have some comments, but I can wait until...
Let's find out, because this is a big topic, are there any additional questions before we move into comments? Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, Flynn, Councilmember Bernstein just asked a question about somebody who's, someone showing breasts in a restaurant or a business along Palm Canyon. And what was your answer to that?
So the public nudity ordinance is applicable to public places, so public rights-of-way, public parks, et cetera. In terms of private property, such as a restaurant, restaurant is subject to the zoning code, and also, under the municipal code, the definition of an adult business, where specified anatomical parts are exposed, may qualify that as an adult business. So for example, where a restaurant is in a commercial zone, not in an industrial zone, it wouldn't be permitted to have waitresses, if you will, topless, because that would qualify it as an adult business. An adult business needs to be in an industrial zone and needs to have an adult business permit.
But if we're, if we're not, if we're, if we're saying we're not considering topless to be part of our nudity ordinance?
Correct. And so there's a distinction between what happens at a private business between and what happens in the public realm.
So someone could be adhering to our nudity policy in a private business and still be in violation? That seems not to make sense to me.
Again, we're looking at the direction of the City Council in terms of our public nudity ordinance and how that is applicable. And so you all, as new council members, might have a different opinion in terms of how that public nudity ordinance should be constructed.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks. So in your presentation, you talked about in seeking separation of distance and defining protective use or adjusting protected use, and we changed from 500 to 600 feet for schools, and, correct?
That is correct, for schools, parks, youth centers, et cetera.
Yeah, okay. And then the next bullet point or so down in the presentation, we increased, or no, we didn't put in foot, linear footage, we're talking about just being adjacent to. So what's the, we're increasing the distance from schools and parks for use, defining protected use. But then, when we talk about sex clubs or sex venue, right, that's falling into a protected use that we're changing to just being adjacent to.
And so...
Did I follow that?
Yeah, let me go ahead and address that. So one of the concerns that we've had in the past is, looking at the Sunny Dunes area, for example, an industrial area, adult businesses are permitted there under the municipal code currently. However, because of residential adjacency requirements, it makes most of the properties in that area ineligible. And so while our municipal code allows them in industrial districts, the separation distance is really what limited where they could locate. And so, for example, properties on Industrial Place, properties adjacent to Calle Palo Fiero, were not allowed to have adult businesses because they were within that 650 feet. And so that's one of the reasons why we had the discussion at the last meeting about changing that requirement to not adjacent to, as a means to still offer protection to residential areas, while allowing the businesses to locate within those industrial areas where it may be appropriate.
Got it. So then, protected use, we already have in that definition, when it comes to cannabis, there already is 600-foot separation?
Correct. And so we're trying to make that consistent.
Got it, okay. Then you talked about the layout of a, I think it was sex venue, a floor plan, interior floor plan, and that we weren't going to have requirements stipulated, and that would be reviewed on a permit-by-permit basis. Is that right?
That is correct.
So how do we base, what are we basing that review on if we're not giving the owner, the applicant, guidelines?
So in terms of the existing ordinance, it gets into rather specific detail about doors and openings and things like that, which is a little problematic to work with. In terms of what we are proposing, we're looking at the specific use, and it would be adult sex venues that we would look at, as well as adult entertainment venues, so a bar or a nightclub. And so what we are looking at in terms of both of those venues is, number one, does it meet code requirements in terms of life safety? And so those are basic building code requirements that would be applicable to the business, making sure they have adequate restroom facilities per our building code. And then looking at things such as the security plan, in terms of lighting in the interior, exits, et cetera. And so those are the things that we are looking at. And so it really comes down to applying the city's building code, and then, in addition to that, looking at security requirements from our police department.
Does PD look at it?
They don't currently, but what we're proposing is that they have the same level of review as currently is applied to nightclubs.
Okay, good, thank you for that. The, you mentioned toward the end, the optional language you are sharing, page 24, see items, paragraph C up on the top of the page, optional language, any permitted parade, fair, or festival held under a city or other government-issued permit. I shared previously that I think, I'm in favor of that language, including that language, and I appreciate that it's being added or suggested that we added. But I don't think we need to say parade, fair, or festival when we're saying any permitted event held under a city or other government-issued permit. So it's already considered acceptable if it's being in, for issuing a permit for it. So I'm not sure, I don't think we need to say parade, fair, or festival.
And certainly, we could simplify that language, as you've suggested.
And the only other item that I'm challenged with is page 13, second to the last paragraph, and I've mentioned it previously. But for council to know that, my concern is, even though we're talking about hotels having a future, better-defining hotels and boutique hotels in residential areas, we don't have that today. Using that last sentence, where we say an adult sex venue is also any place that represents itself to any person or group of persons as a place for persons to engage in specified sexual activities, I'm concerned that any of our hotels that may have an event that, for a day or a weekend, that, that activities occur, that they're going to be considered a sex venue based off of that sentence. So I'm not, I don't think that that sentence should be included today. I would rather wait and see what our language is going to be when we define, or better define, the use of the boutique hotels or hotels that are in residential zone property, but also flush out the definition for hotels... but also flush out the definition for hotels, or not even hotels, anywhere, you know, convention center, hotels, public venues, that would do what staff is trying to achieve with identifying sex venues, but also excluding, if there could be some exclusion as to, you know, these events that are one-offs, whether it's a 24-hour event or a 48-hour event or a three-day weekend at our hotels, there seems to me we can create a carve-out for that.
Yeah, I think one of the quick fixes to that is to identify in that definition that it primarily holds itself out to be a location where those activities take place. That would distinguish it from a hotel whose primary purpose is to rent rooms, to have accommodations, overnight accommodations. So, I think there is a quick fix to that definition to kind of carve that out.
And I think the definition of adult sex venue, it is defined to mean any establishment not primarily dedicated to providing overnight lodging accommodations. So, that's already in the definition that's being proposed. So, a hotel that is primarily dedicated to providing overnight lodging accommodations would not fall into the definition of adult sex venue.
But that also excludes private events at the convention center, adjacent convention center property, non-hotel events that might be happening, or locations where something may happen where it's not a hotel. The bank, for example, the old bank building. You know, any of our, any of our businesses or bars that would possibly could play host to a special event. So, I understand the overnight lodging accommodation has been, is in that first sentence there. But what about if it's not a primary lodging establishment?
The definition goes on to say, which is a regular and substantial course of conduct permits persons to engage in specified sexual activities. So, if it were a business that's normally, you know, just a convention center or, you know, type of a center, but it's not as a regular and substantial course of business, maybe it holds one or two a year, then I don't think it would fall into the definition of adult sex venue, because I don't think we would consider that a regular and substantial course of conduct. If they held it every weekend or, you know, 40, 40 times a year, then it might fall into that definition. But just a couple of times per year, I don't think we would qualify that under this proposed definition.
Yeah, excellent, I appreciate that. And inserting the word primarily, again, on that last sentence, Flynn, I think is a very good suggestion. Last item for me is on page 1922, paragraph 22D, where we're saying the operators shall ensure the facility is maintained in a sanitary condition. I didn't hear in your report, Flynn, that we were going to put definition as to what that, what does that mean? What is sanitary condition? And who says it's sanitary?
I agree that we probably need more specificity there. I had done some research earlier today, looking at other communities in terms of their health and safety standards for these types of venues. I'll need to do some additional work on that and come back to the city council. One of the things that LA County has done is they identify that it needs to be maintained in a sanitary condition, and then gives the public health officer the ability to adopt regulations which define what that is, or adopt policy which defines what that is. We might do the same here for the city of Palm Springs, is then adopt policy identifying what those conditions are. But I will need to do some additional research on that. And Councilmember DeHart, while we're on the subject, one of the things you and I discussed also was adding an annual inspection requirement for our adult-oriented businesses. And that's something that I would also add to that section in terms of the license renewal process requiring an inspection by city staff annually.
Yeah, okay. And just of note, in that same paragraph 22, that's where it's calling out health standards, safe sex supplies, condoms, lubricant should be made available to patrons, and training and educational materials be made available. So, staff, you got that covered in that paragraph. So, thank you for that. And that's all the questions I had, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, Holstich and Middleton, do you have questions? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. First, Flynn, really good job on a very difficult subject, so thank you. I want to go to the question of expanding into the C2 zones. Are any of our current adult-oriented facilities in a C2 zone?
No, they aren't.
So, given the fact that when we look at C2 and the number of potential sites that are actually workable, is there any point really in expanding to C2?
In looking at the parcels that would become eligible, only resulting in two to three parcels, and they're currently undeveloped, it's a little bit problematic to think about expanding to C2. However, again, this is the decision of city council. If you still feel it's appropriate to do so, we've written the ordinance to allow that.
So, given those couple of parcels, I believe, are in Sunny Dunes, my neighbor, my district, if the undeveloped parcel was to have a developer who wanted to develop those parcels, would they be able to request a zoning change, if necessary, in order to build a facility that would be approved through the planning process, including the planning commission?
Yes, they could request it. I don't know how likely a change of zone would be in that particular area, just looking at adjacencies and some of the general principles of zone changes that we have.
So, and next question, and I'm going to keep my questions really pretty brief. The definition of public nudity, in adopting the San Francisco definition as opposed to the definition that's common for every other city in the Coachella Valley, you did so because that was one that was essentially gender-neutral?
Yes, that was the input that we had had from councilmembers.
All right, so, well, I'm going to resist the urge to comment on when we're talking about genital areas that there are sexual, sex differences. And so, but I would like to ask the police chief a question.
I'm ready.
Chief, do you have any concerns regarding any of the changes in the nudity statute as is being presented to us?
I don't have any concerns with the statute as it has been presented. My concerns are the enforcement of it and the reasonableness. Should, for us, the more complex a ordinance is, the more difficult it becomes to enforce. So, the simpler the language and the more plain it is, the better for our officers. And, go ahead.
Are you familiar with the language that's used by other cities in the Coachella Valley?
Yes, I've read some of those ordinances.
Are those easier to understand and enforce?
Not necessarily. I mean, if it's, if the council so chooses to put in a gender-neutral language permitting the exposure of the breast, that is clear to us and the language as it's proposed makes sense to me overall.
Without getting too far into comments, there's at least one city council member who does not believe the gender-neutral is an appropriate ideal for the nudity ordinance.
Understood.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Middleton, did you have more questions?
No, I have more comments, but I'll save those.
Okay, yeah, I think that everyone has quite a bit of comments, and I don't think that this at all is something that we will be resolving tonight. I know that there has been discussion about the possibility of creating an ad hoc group of two councilmembers to just to go over this more fully. Let's hear folks' comments first, and then we can go ahead and determine if there's a need to create a small group to further discuss these items. Councilmember Holstich, you had a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't believe I asked questions.
Oh, my apologies, go ahead.
Sorry, it's been, it's been a long night, even though it's early for us. I just have a few questions if I can. So, I am interested in the age limit. So, I saw that you included, staff included, age six. And I did see that most other cities did have 10, though it's various, varied in terms of the age that the public nudity ordinance would apply. I just wanted to ask either Chief or someone else, whoever is appropriate, to answer that, why we chose six, if we think that's too early, if there's a, if we should go with it. It looked like most of the Coachella Valley cities had 10, age 10. So, Chief, do you have any input there about what's appropriate based on normal standards?
I don't know about based on normal standards, because I've not done a survey to find out broadly what the age limits are in cities. But from an enforcement perspective, the further you are away from puberty, I think the better for our ability to understand what, who can be clothed and who cannot be clothed.
Thank you. And to Flynn, I know you referenced the survey that staff did. I'm trying to pull up the page number, so. But nearly all of them that I saw had age 10 or maybe younger, but not age six, it seemed to be out. Although, San Francisco has age five. But age six seemed to be like a large outlier. If you have comments about that?
I wouldn't say it's a large outlier. It's one that other cities have adopted. And interestingly enough, San Francisco has five, which I didn't quite expect in doing the research. Again, this is really up to community preference in terms of what you all feel is best for public safety and welfare. 10 is what other communities have adopted, 6 is what some have adopted. And again, I think either way, you've heard the police chief's comments, but either way, what you all as councilmembers feel is appropriate, we're more than happy to make those changes.
Thank you. And then, I have a question. So, the current ordinance and the last ordinance have a ban on tipping workers, so at adult establishments, I believe. So, I spoke to the city attorney about that. So, is that something that we should retain when we change this ordinance? Could you just speak a little bit about the current ban and the intent there and staff's recommendation about keeping it or not?
To be perfectly honest, the language about tipping performers at adult entertainment venues is language that is still retained from the 1995 ordinance. It's a policy decision on the part of city council if you want to retain that or if you want to eliminate it.
Thank you. And then, one question about the waiver process. So, it seems like one thing that might fix our, some of our issues in terms of where these go is a waiver process, since it seems like there might be debate or confusion about the definitions, right? We got an email from someone who wants to do a cabaret review-type show. And the question is, would that, you know, fall under the adult ordinance? Would that only be limited to the C2 or less that the city council decides? Would a waiver process be appropriate?
I would say that we'd want to be cautious about implementing any waiver process, at least if we're thinking about it in similar vein to what we have for the cannabis, which is somewhat subjective. Most of these businesses are protected in some form or another by the First Amendment. And so, when you start getting into subjective discretionary reviews, courts are more skeptical of those. So, it is safer to have kind of objective standards in terms of zones and measurable distance requirements as opposed to kind of subjective standards, which is what we have in our cannabis ordinance.
So, the question about the cabaret show that Public Comment received, what would the answer be for that? That would be adult use and be limited to those zones? Or would that be entertainment and excluded?
Depending on the program itself, it potentially could be excluded. For example, looking at some of the reviews in Las Vegas, where it is not the primary purpose of the show, but rather something that's secondary to the show itself, that would fall under the exemption of live theatrical entertainment. However, if it is focused solely on anatomical parts, then it would fall under an adult business. And so, I think that's how we would distinguish those two. But we would need to look closely at what is the performance.
Okay, so drag shows or other, like, limited shows at venues that would fall under that entertainment exemption?
Correct.
Okay. Same thing with go-go dancers at clubs and things like that?
Correct. Go-go dancers at clubs, for example. Arenas has been mentioned, that the bars there occasionally have go-go dancers. They would not be considered to be adult businesses, and so that type of entertainment may continue. And as already been mentioned, ABC also monitors those locations as well. So, no, I don't believe that would be an issue.
And that wouldn't be adult use? Just, it's just, yeah. I do think the gender equity is important because you get into questions of equity between different, you know, venues and different sexes performing and all of that. But yeah, I agree with the mayor that, you know, we can debate about council if, what next steps would be for this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, I know we've been talking about on this topic for almost one hour. So, if we can keep our comments brief, I don't think that we're going to reach any sort of consensus on this. But I think what would be most helpful right now for staff is for us to clearly state either more information that we need or what our thoughts are so that either staff or a subcommittee can continue this work or not continue this work if there is not the desire of council. Is there someone? Mayor Protam, did you want to go ahead?
Happy to, I mean, I'm happy to give, I want to give all my comments. I am another council member that's not in favor of adding additional districts, especially as we find that we have more and more businesses in our area moving to other areas where they may not have been before. I would like to have a specific language on how requirements for sex venues working with public health or public health providers. Not sure exactly how that would work. I'm not sure if we can require the public health department. I think public health providers would be very interested in doing that. I would ask that Chief, that maybe you look at sex venues in other cities and drug issues and what that might, what issues that might pose for us. I don't think there's, I think that's just, it may actually be more controlled than people doing it on their own because somebody's alerted if they overdose, but I would like to see that. I would like to see specific language that makes sure they, the patrons, especially if they have outdoor space, are not visible from residential areas besides not being just adjacent. I actually agree with our age six. I think, I think children at 10 start to approach puberty these days, and I'm not sure if that has changed since 1995. But 10-year-olds certainly look a lot more mature than I used to. In terms of public nudity, I don't know. I think the term is limitations on time, place, and manner. And I think we might want to look at that, where people could be nude. Because whatever we permit will happen in my view of the city. I understand the reasoning for having gender-neutral public nudity rules. I think unfortunately, that is not the norm for in this country. And I've lived in Europe where there's places where it is. I think, I think it poses a lot of problems. And I don't want to be discriminatory, but I think that would at least require some more thought and input from the community. I'm not sure how to get that. But those are sort of my comments in general direction without, if that's okay.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. Is there another council member that would like to provide comments? No? You have Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. Mostly, I wanted to just say I agree with Jeffrey, but I don't support any expansion in the number of areas in which adult businesses are allowed to operate. And I've not seen that we are having difficulty with adult businesses not being able to find appropriate places. As I mentioned earlier, Sunny Dunes is part of my district. It's an area in which there has been adult businesses going back for decades. I believe that it is a district in which it does work. And I think the not adjacent to definition for the Sunny Dunes District also is one that has stood the test, will work, and will work in a community. I am very concerned to our publicity ordinance. And I, I think I can support. I do think I can support a definition that is contested with the other states of Coachella Valley. But I also want to make sure that the Department of the Police Department have a nudity ordinance they can support.
It appears we've lost Councilmember Middleton. While we get her back, are there other council members? Councilmember Middleton, go ahead.
With all respect, I do not believe that the idea of gender neutrality works when you're talking about a definition of nudity that stretches a very fine objective to a not logical place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Do we have other comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I just want to clarify, regarding the sex venues, as they do exist, so the idea of having them permitted and licensed, I think is a better option. I just wanted to see those requirements in terms of public health and understanding what drug issues there may be. I am, but I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying we should do it. We have the opportunity to do it with thoughtfulness.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmembers DeHart or Holstich, did you have any additional comments? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I know Councilmember DeHart was unmuted, so I was sorry. I was going like this to see if he'd like to go first.
Either, either one, or you don't, you don't have to comment. Just, it's on the table if you do.
I'm happy to go. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the ordinance that came forward in front of us. I agree with Councilmember, Mayor Protam Bernstein's comments about clarifying some of that. You know, I would, this is, you know, unfortunately for our new council members, the second time that we're seeing this and having an in-depth conversation, and this is the first time that they are. So that's hard then for all of us to get aligned and get all of our questions answered and all of our policy considerations there. So I want to make sure everyone has ample time for all of that work. But I really appreciated the questions that he raised. So, yeah, I, I don't have any further questions or comments. You know, I had brought up the issue of tipping, which is banned in our current ordinance, which is just interesting considering what we see at Chill Bar or Hunters or many other places. I am concerned about equity issues, just because I've been to a number of drag shows where there's either trans performers or male, female performers, and it just gets very complicated when their breasts are exposed. I had originally asked in the last council meeting if breastfeeding was currently illegal or not allowed under the public nudity ordinance, because it did talk about nipples. And so obviously, I'd like to see, and I'm sure many of us would, a city where you're able to breastfeed. We know our police aren't enforcing that, but it is on the books, and it's concerning to me as a city that wants to welcome families. And as I mentioned, sort of, I think the definitions are going to be really important here and just the equity of, you know, what's happening on any given night at certain businesses and ensuring that this is equitable and fair and done in a, you know, permitted way where we really can get a handle on it. So I believe that there are businesses, or at least one business, that has applied and has been going through this with us now for a very long time, many, many months. And so I know staff talked about that at the last council meeting of, you know, one reason for council to consider the, this ordinance update. So, you know, I'm interested in that. I'm not delaying this conversation further. I mean, we could debate all of this forever. And I think it's just a question of, you know, what's going to be good enough to move forward and implement.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart, did you have comments?
When I say very quick, I mean, really do mean very quick. I agree with Councilmember Holstich. I neglect, I didn't see the, the tipping line, and that certainly is outdated and is, doesn't apply even today. So I would be in favor of striking paragraph 21, dealing with the tipping and gratuity. And the only other thing I want to make sure is that we're very careful and we're not sending a message to the public that we're singling out, singling out one industry as being a high-drug-using-type industry or that the clientele is perceived to be that. So I just want to be careful that, that, that our comments aren't taken to be a blanket comment about, you know, particular industry or businesses.
Thank you. Since I haven't given comments, I guess I will at this point. I think overall, we're doing a lot of cleanup to this ordinance. We're making the language simplify, we're simplifying the language. We're simplifying the process for these businesses to apply for licenses and putting in a lot of good things in terms of security and talking about public health and safety. The only thing about this, I do think there was quite a few items that were addressed in terms of additional explanation that was needed that I heard in the questions. For instance, Councilmember DeHart mentioned what is, what is the definition of sanitary and, and other things that were listed. I'm getting the sense that there's not an agreement on the expansion in the C2 area. I don't have an opinion really either way. It doesn't seem like it's a big impact if we expand or if we, or if we don't. I'm fine to defer to, to council. In terms of the public nudity ordinance, I think it can get, I find that it's already confusing the way it is proposed. And I'm just honestly not sure where, where I stand on, on that one. Flynn?
Do you want me to tell you where you stand?
No, I don't.
I'm not sure what the question was.
No. The question for you, Flynn, is it, it looks like we have general agreement on some of these things and a no on a few others and a few hanging questions. Like Councilmember Holstich said, I don't want to continue to drag this on for too long. So I'm wondering if there's a, from what you've heard tonight, if there's a recommendation in terms of how we move forward?
I think there's a lot of things that we can do based on the comments that we've received here this evening. Some has been quite clear to us. There might be a couple of points where it would be helpful to work with a subcommittee. I don't know if the council would like to do that or not. I would be more than open to that idea. I think it would help us to refine a number of the points where there are questions from council members. And so that might be easier to do in some type of a subcommittee format and then come back with a updated and revised ordinance to the entire council.
Do we, Councilmember Holstich, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to also keep count and see if there's agreement among the council or if all council wants to wait on this item for more time or for more subcommittee work. I agree with the mayor. I don't feel strongly about expansion to C2. So I definitely want to defer to Councilmember Middleton, since it's her district. So do we want to piece out any of these pieces, you know, and separate the adult-oriented business ordinance, which sounds like there might be agreement upon, although there might be questions for a second reading or more specificity, as Jeffrey, excuse me, Mayor Protam noted, with the public nudity ordinance, which might have more discussion, or actually, it sounds like council might be aligned there. I'm not sure where all the votes land, but I'm just trying to see if there's any resolution we can get to tonight, based on all of this discussion, where you all want to go from here in terms of what the subcommittee work would look like, since I'm sure we don't have, want to have lots and lots more public hours in public about discussing these topics in this level of detail. And we want to put these hours to good use.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. I think that is a good point. If we were, I think it is possible to do a motion for approving the adult businesses ordinance, excluding any expansion of C2. And I am getting some nods of approval there. The additional, the other ordinance in terms of public nudity, I'm not sure I could vote on it tonight. I just still have a lot of lingering questions there. I'm getting a nod from Mayor Protam over here as well. So is there a motion on the floor for this larger, more substantial piece on adult businesses?
I can support moving forward on the adult businesses if we don't address public nudity.
Okay, fantastic. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Just, I, I agree as long, not, we're not talking about C2 anymore. So just the redefinition and expansion, with my one caveat that they, there's public, public safety, health, and, and working somehow built into it so that we know, and the not visible from near residential.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that would be my motion, to we approve the changes to the adult business with the caveats that the ones that are not, the clientele is not visible from residential, and that there is a requirement to work with public health or public health providers for both disease and sexually transmitted infections and potential drug use, which is not defining that they do it, but just in case.
Great. I can second that. And then we will, let's, let's take that, and then we can decide how we'll move forward. So City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protam Bernstein?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton? Five zero, motion passes.
Great, thank you. That's one and done. Thank you, Councilmember Holstich, for pushing me along on that one. All right, with the, in terms of public nudity, I don't, as was stated, we don't have consensus on that to move forward. Is, does council feel that we need a, a subcommittee on this? Or is it just giving all of us a little bit more time to mull over how we'd like to move forward? For me, it's the latter.
Mayor Gardner, I think I need to read the title.
Oh, please go ahead and read the title.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending chapter 577 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to adult-oriented business regulations and amending chapter 1110 relating to public nudity.
No, not, but that, just striking that at last part. We're not, we're not addressing the, relating to the public nudity yet.
Let me read it again.
Okay.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending chapter 577 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to adult-oriented business regulations.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Is there an interest in a subcommittee for the public nudity discussion? No. Okay. Well, it, for me, for me, it sounds like maybe we are tabling this as for, to an unknown date at this time. I don't believe that there's anything extremely pressing that we need to address in it. I do, I do want to echo, though, Councilmember Holstich's point that we don't want, we want to make sure that any public nudity ordinance does not try to prevent breastfeeding. That's, that's very important. So I do think we want to edit this ordinance, even though our officers, of course, are not enforcing that as it is. But we do want to make sure it's in line with equity in that, in that regard. All right. I think we're all tired. Let's move on then. At this time, we will take public comment. This time has been set aside for the public to address the City Council on items of general interest within the subject matter of the, subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do. Michael Joseph Pickens, you have two minutes.
Michael Joseph Picken, excerpts of vendetta against me. All of public benefit entitlements are under Department of Defense. Since days of George Washington, through a congressional process called Equally Worthy Claim, the new groups insist that they are equally worthy as the covered groups. HIV/Ryan White Care Act is under Department of Defense. In LA, I quit Hughes under Rupert Murdoch when they evacuated LA as one of the planes was headed to LA on 9/11. My roommate at the time, David Hoesley, an engineer, designed the stealth bomber at Northrop Grumman, a contractor of Department of Defense. In Reno, when my Obama phone account was sent to 4412 Baker Lane Apartment C, Reno, Nevada, 89509, it was then sent to my landlord's address, the City Center Apartments, Park 160. At City Center Apartments, I was there six years, and I had a credit card key entry only the landlord had access to. All of my medical records gone through. My first phone SIM card on my kitchen table stolen. Someone would walk on the roof, throw items... Someone would walk on the roof, throw items to the vents into my floor. Officer Paul Rogers, Ohio State PD, 607-689-3039, messaged my replacement Obama phone, one week old, stolen, registered to John Goki and Gian Allen. 7/11 ATM kiosk Reno PD declared gang hacked. Only this week I have discovered the Department of Corrections uses these kiosks. Capital One Bank account requesting personal family identification comes off as hacker spear phishing account takeover. On 10/20/20, Heritage Bank of Nevada opened two accounts in my name, one of which they would not close, number T 2012450. HIV medications poisoned without my consent. The moment I stopped them, I got better. Heart issue without my consent. I had to hear from my ran social media that COVID was a heart issue.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amando Salinas II.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Amando Salinas. I am the representative for the National Legislative Council for the American Legion. I'm also the Area Five Judge Advocate for the American Legion and a member of the Hispanic American Police Command Association, HAPCOA, and an active member of the Aeronautic Institute. I am here today because the American Legion District 21 is proposing the American Youth Baseball in Palm Springs to hopefully address the kids at risk and kids at youth, giving everyone the opportunity to go ahead and participate in youth baseball. We were fortunate enough to get an allowance with, alliance with the police department and hoping to get a better relationship as individuals instead of just policemen. So the kids see them as individual men and participate. So we've worked the last year to get coaches and we have kids. So I'm here announced to say thank you so much for the police department and their effort to get our youth involved and look at kids at risk in the future. We're also going to be involved with bringing the STEM program. I'm off to DC in February. And I'll be approaching them for funds to go ahead and get a youth STEM program for the area across to help our future kids get hopefully employment. I'm a great example of that. I grew up in Palm Springs. My primary language is Spanish. But in the 60s, there was the aerospace industry. And here I am today, ex-aerospace engineer, avionics, and moving it forward. So we're hoping that by bringing games, youth and STEM program to the city through the American Legion program, that we can go ahead and help and work with the city. We do need your help, though, in providing fields and a safe environment for the kids to play. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah McGary.
Want to get ready, this is going to take a few minutes. Again, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Deborah McGary, Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company. I'm reaching out to inform our customers that natural gas prices are going to be even higher than usual this January due to several unprecedented factors beyond our control. Customers may see winter gas bills double or higher compared to one year. High gas bills are a result of historically high natural gas prices in the western states. SoCal Gas does not set prices for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national, regional markets. SoCal Gas buys natural gas from those markets on behalf of our residents and small business customers. The cost of buying natural gas is billed to those customers with no markup, meaning SoCal Gas does not profit from the gas commodities being priced. According to SoCal Gas Energy Information Administration, a number of factors are contributing to the high gas prices. Widespread natural gas, widespread below normal temperatures on much of the west coast, including Washington and Oregon. High natural gas demand for heating for those customers in those areas. Reduced natural gas supply to the west coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains. Reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the west coast because of pipeline maintenance activity on the west coast of Texas and low natural gas storage on the west coast. To help our customers reduce their bills, we encourage them to lower their thermostats three to five degrees, health permitting. Use caulking and weather stripping. This will help reduce their bills by 15 to 10%. Wash your clothes in cold water. Reduce temperatures to their water heater to 120 degrees and limit the use of non-essential gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters and fireplaces. If you need more information, go to socalgas.com and we'll be happy to provide you additional information. Also, SoCal Gas donated $1 million to the gas contribution for customers that can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Strickberger, who's online. You have two minutes, Stephen.
Hi, I'm calling, I'm a resident of Palm Springs. And I'm calling for many patrons of the Palm Springs pool. There have been major issues. The pool has been closed seven times in the past, in January alone. And there doesn't seem to be a plan to get the pool, the management together. The city says there's a long-term plan, but now there's already been seven days we haven't been able to swim. And there doesn't seem to be enough lifeguards and it's a real mess there. Today I went to swim, it was closed. It was closed on Tuesday. And I'm calling behalf of many people because we depend on the pool for mental, physical health. And of course, we understand when there's emergencies, but this is like a long, this has been like a month-long issue. So I just want to make you all aware that this is an issue and it's affecting a lot of people in Palm Springs. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lonnie Landers. You have two minutes.
Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I am, I am rather appalled in just hearing that you guys railroaded through the passage of this adult business thing. Everybody had just agreed that the sections on page 18 and 19, where it deals with tipping and the gratuity sections of that, that everybody thought that that was just ridiculous. It was a 1995 law. And yet, you know, we have drag queens and all of those sort of shows that the tipping occurs. But you just approved a law that has that language in it. And so it still remains that you can't, the adult businesses can't have tips to the entertainers and what have you. I don't understand how that just went by the wayside when you guys had just addressed it a couple of minutes before the vote. But more importantly is, as you may or may not be aware, I'm the owner of Wang's in the Desert. And so we have been struggling ever since the council in its infinite wisdom allowed the conditional use from it to go through for well in the desert. We know how that all worked out. And I've had, I've had the business up for sale since late 2019. And I am, I can't, I have had a couple of these businesses that would like to put an adult nightclub in my space. But because the zoning issues and the issues that are up for discussion here, it can't happen specifically that it can't front or be facing a major thoroughfare. Well, that's rather discriminatory when we have on major thoroughfares, we have the cannabis dispensaries and lounges. And the, there are many businesses on major thoroughfares that are serving alcohol. So why is it that any of these adult nightclubs cannot face, be forward-facing on these major thoroughfares? That makes no sense to me. It's just discriminatory, once again, against these type of businesses. I will submit my written comments to all of you. And hopefully, when you do the subcommittee thing or what have you, that these can be addressed in detail and may be brought back up and do the right thing and things that make common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Shifteer.
Madam Clerk, Terry Shifteer is no longer in the room.
Okay. Next speaker is Terry Shugru.
Terry Shugru is no longer in the room either.
And that's the last speaker.
Thank you very much. The next item is City Council and City Manager Agenda Development. Do we have any comments from our city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If we could, we'll go ahead and put the upcoming tentative meeting schedule. We'll share that with you. At our next meeting, we have approximately four hours estimated of time on items we would need to have deliberation on. We have a public hearing on historic designation for two different items. The hotel incentive program covenant for Discanso Resort, a public hearing. We have the vacation rental fee adoption public hearing. Vacation rental maps under Business and Legislative. We'll have an update on the navigation center. And then we have an item on orchid tree operations, a covenant and TOT agreement. Following that, the second meeting in February, we have the Dream Hotel amendment on there for a public hearing. Sidewalk vending ordinance will be coming back. We have the rescission of the local emergency order. Community development block grant, annual action plan and a mid-year budget update, which will also include the capital improvement project update that we've discussed. In March, we're, we'll be adding to that. Right now, you don't see anything there, but it will quickly fill up. And we also are looking at having our visioning session with the new city manager and the new council. So we will be contacting you about dates to schedule that as well. So that's it for us.
Thank you. My question for you is, for those next two meetings, are there items that can be pushed to March? I'm a little concerned, especially with our next meeting. Those are quite a few meaty topics, the orchid tree, two items related to vacation rentals. And we're likely to get a great deal of public comment. Can any of those items potentially be moved, even if we leave them on the agenda? I just want to get a sense of how this meeting is going to flow.
We can certainly look at that and then order the agenda in such a way that if there's the items that maybe could be pushed, can be pushed toward the end of the meeting. And let me just check with some of my colleagues here as well.
Okay.
What we might be able to do is look at the historic designation applications and see if those can go to a later meeting date.
Great, thank you. And I know that the historic designations usually don't elicit too much conversation. However, they do usually have fairly lengthy presentations, which I think the public and council generally enjoy. So we don't try to limit them too much.
I do think they may want to have them before Modernism Week, which may be the timing.
I see. All right, well, if we can, well, I appreciate that council was very concise in their comments today. We did get through the agenda fairly quickly. I ask the same for all future meetings, so hopefully we can make it happen. I see our Councilmember Aiden has joined us. Does, do any council members have additional agenda items that they would like to propose for a future meeting? Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I'd like to see, we've had a lot of written comment, verbal comment and comment at tonight's meeting on the pool. If we could get a report from staff on the status of what is, what's our plan? What's currently happening and how are we going to, you know, rectify the current situation?
I'm just saying, I agree. If you need a second.
Great, so we have two and we have Councilmember Middleton nodding as well, as well as Councilmember Holstich. Great. And I, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, I do, we do have an update that we are preparing and I was going to send you all a memo on. And then we'd be available for any other meetings. And of course, we will be putting out information to our customers, so an update.
Great.
So if that would suffice, if that answers your request here.
Great, I think, I think that's great. If, and then Theresa, you and I can decide if maybe we need to do a public update at the next meeting based on that memo.
Okay.
If, just a quick.
That sounds good.
A quick update if necessary. All right, any other agenda development from council members? If not, are there comments from council members? Mayor Protam, go, oh, Councilmember Middleton, go ahead.
I'll be quick. I did have an opportunity while in Sacramento last week to have discussions with Senator Sayarto, Senator Padilla, Assemblymember Wallace and the governor's legislative chief of staff regarding the Gene Autry and Indian Canyon wash situations and the need for funding for bridging of those areas. RCTC, the Riverside County Transportation Commission, is holding special meetings next week at the Renaissance Hotel. Thursday afternoon and Friday morning, those meetings are open to the public. On January 12th, the California Secretary of Transportation sent to the Federal Railway Association a list of six projects that were California's priority projects for rail. That included the Coachella Valley, San Garcornio Pass Rail Project. And lastly, I want to thank and congratulate the chief, not only for what I hear was a very special day that I'm sorry I was not able to attend, but also for his valley voice and his plan on dealing with homelessness. We thank you for that kind of leadership and look forward to the kind of results that we think it's going to produce. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you, Mayor. I did, pass out a kudo to staff to start off. And we can put this under community helping neighbors category. But Liza Chavez, Executive Assistant for Mayor and Council, was a trooper in helping a local veteran get connected to supportive senior services in District 2. And it's great to see our staff going the extra mile to help residents in the community. Also, hats off and appreciation to staff for moving forward and removing the aged rainbow crosses. The crosswalks and the Arenas District merchants and our community members are very supportive of getting that done and looking forward to a future plan for something that is unique for Arenas. So thank you for getting that done. And earlier, or last week, I was fortunate to attend the League of Cities Councilmember Training. Very worthwhile few days in Sacramento to learn how to do this job better. So I appreciated the opportunity to be able to attend that workshop session. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, just a few things. I know, I guess it was earlier this month, there was two deputies in Riverside County who we lost in the line of duty. And I've spoken to some of our officers. I know it's difficult for all of us when this happens, but especially for our own officers. And I just wanted to give my thoughts to our officers and the ones in Riverside County and let them know that the whole, our whole community cares and supports them. I also wanted to mention tomorrow is Holocaust Remembrance Day. I know the mayor will be speaking and I'll be speaking. And this marks the, now the 78th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz in Birkenau. And it's, I would encourage people to, if they're not familiar, to read up and ensure that they pay attention to this remembrance. And then just on a personal note, lost a very close friend today who was a former Broadway star who spent the last 10, 13 years, he moved with us to Palm Springs, working with all the theater groups. I think he performed with every single one of them. His name is Sal Mastrata. And also spent that time working with high school students throughout the Coachella Valley to train them for future Broadway careers and interests. So my friend Sal, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich, did you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I haven't been preparing comments in the hope of briefer council meetings.
Thank you.
So that's my constituents, that's why I haven't been doing that, to limit the timing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The only comments I have is that we did have a police, Chamber of Commerce had a police and fire thank you lunch today. It was a really wonderful event honoring our public safety and there were awards given out by both our acting given out by both our acting fire chief and our police chief, and the, the stories that they shared about the bravery of these officers was really incredible, and I appreciated hearing all of those. So thank you to all of our public safety team for, for taking care of us, including the civilian team that assists. And with that, we will close the meeting in honor of Sal.
Sal Mistrada.
Sal Mistrada. The next city council meeting will be held on February 9th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. Good night, everyone.